No, not that one. Oh, yeah. See if they stand up and get your weight off of it. There, is that better?
Oh, now that's better. Takes the weight off my body.
A little sore.
Ready, gentlemen?
When you see a tire moving toward you, and you are helpless.
Ready?
Yeah.
Terrifying.
We call this a meeting to order, November 20th, 6:00 PM. Valerie, you would pledge allegiance first?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rosie, could you broke up please?
Present. Present. Here.
Okay, commissioners, any announcements?
I have none.
Department, any announcements?
Just a minor note of housekeeping that I hope to catch up with you after the meeting here for signatures on the resolutions, as well as the applicants who might have their applications acted upon today for their signatures. So, I hope to not do that after each item, but yet we might be coordinating. At least your signature, that'd be nice. Thank you very much.
All right, public comment. If you have something to speak about that's not in the agenda, you have three minutes. That's public comment, if anybody wishes to speak on an item that's not in the agenda. You okay? Public comment closed. Consent agenda. Analysis of public hearing. Exclusion of the certificate of posting. Tentative map. File PLN 190037. Adoption of the minutes. Draft minutes, draft meetings for March and February, October. Anybody have anything on the consent agenda?
I didn't find any discrepancies.
I just had one slight change on the meeting minutes from January 16, 2019. It shows Robert Gibson has been absent and Robert Agar has been present. It should be swapped. Other than that, no other edits. Give you credit.
Notable difference.
Okay. So, everything's fine? Make a motion to?
I move to approve with the noted changes to the January minutes.
I second that.
Any favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we jump to item number five. PL 1960, the Children's Cancer Fund Group. And that's the planner?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. This application, the first public hearing this evening, application 190060, on behalf of the Children's Cancer Funding Group, is a zone change request to change a portion of the subject property designated as AR agricultural rangeland to C1 commercial thoroughfare to be consistent with Land Use 5, Policy 5 of the San Benito County General Plan. And so, working as an adjunct to county staff is the EMC Planning Group, and the presentation this evening will be by Mr. Michael Gross from EMC Planning Group. Thank you very much. The staff report, Mr.?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Just a point of clarification. The zoning application for C1 is for a portion of four different assessor parcel numbers. That portion was previously zoned to C3, and this application would be to add a C1 overlay to the currently established C3 zoning of that area.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Michael Gross. I'm recommending the county San Benito, here planning director Barry, the founder, principal plan for the county, and...
And the rest of the county staff in this matter. So, as you know, we've gone through a process already with the nodes, and it was a long process, and you have a lot of information about it. But I want to say tonight that there's another application that's been filed that adds to that. So, let's walk through that. So, the action tonight essentially is for the San Benito County Planning Commission to look at a rezone of Beddable Road to essentially add a C1 overlay district. You want to full-size it. So, going back to a little bit of the history, and I'll just be as brief as I can about the history part, because you've been through it. The general plan was adopted in 2015. That particular general plan identified designation of commercial regional nodes along Highway 101. Those nodes were then put in as a zoning designation, a C3 zoning designation, and then also rezoned at the Board of Supervisors hearing on September 24, 2019. That zoning section that was put in was a very regulated zoning section, a very strict zoning section, that you recommended to the board and was adopted. And you can see the resolution numbers that both adopted the actual, or the ordinance numbers, excuse me, that adopted the actual zoning section and also adopted the rezonings for each one. There was a citizens referendum petition that has been filed that suspends ordinance 991. So, understand 991 is only the C3 zoning section. So, that section that would have got dropped into the code has got a referendum against it, which that referendum suspends that code from being used for the moment, until that's decided by the board. Ordinance 992, the Beddable Road rezoning to C3 remains in place, and there is no corresponding zoning section to implement it at this point in time. However, the general plan is still designated CR, so it still designates a node at that location, as well as we have other zoning classifications in the code that could be used for the implementation. So, the C3 section still exists. The C3 zoning that you adopted or recommended for adoption and went to the board for adoption still exists at that location at this moment. So, the only thing that's suspended is the code section, but the property's still designated C3 at that location. So, again, the node locations that are in the general plan, Beddable Road being the one at the far north end, and then there's three others. The total acres that the property owner owns at Beddable Road is 114 acres. You can see the APN numbers. Again, just the designation from the general plan is CR, which is essentially commercial regional. We identified 29 acres for the C3 designation, and so that 29 acre still remains, as I said, as a C3 designation. The remaining portions of the property are agricultural rangeland and floodplain. A few pictures that you've seen before of the area around Beddable Road. There was quite a few existing buildings on one portion of it. Some of those were knocked down. This is the boundary of that 29 acres. The recommendations that we're looking for from the Planning Commission tonight to the Board of Supervisors is to adopt a couple of resolutions. The first one is a resolution that you've considered the addendum to the certified 2035 General Plan, final EIR. And in your packet tonight, there is an addendum that has been prepared for this action for the C1 designation to overlay the C3 designation. And then recommend to the Board of Supervisors the adoption of an ordinance to change the county zoning map at Beddable Road location to add commercial thoroughfare C1 as an overlay district on top of the regional commercial C3 district. So, the exact same boundary that we just talked about, that's in red, essentially that is designated C3, would also have an overlay of a C1 on top of that. The, again, just to reiterate that the C2516001 of the San Benito Code allows C1, the thoroughfare district, to be an overlay district. So, you have an overlay combining district. So, when you do that, you have standards from two different districts, one being the C1 overlay. The overlay will rule, and if the C3 stays in place, then the C3 will be all of those things that are not in the C1, essentially. So, in terms of standards and those types of things. So, we can talk a little bit more about that as we go. C1 regulations modify the regulations of the base zone with which the C1 district is combined. So, the base zone will be the C3 district that it's modifying. C3 district code remains in place. The C3 district regulations do not conflict with the C1 district, will be applicable to future development. So, basically, if it doesn't conflict with the C1 district, then it'll, the C3 district will apply. If the C3 is repealed through the referendum process, future development will refer to the C1 development regulations only. The C1 development regulations have three levels of approval. They have a site plan approval, administrative permit, and a use permit. I don't think it's really that important that those things are listed in that way. I know it became an issue before when we did the C3 code, and the reason I say that is I'm going to go through some general plan policies that require some much stricter review by the Planning Commission. So, the general plan policy LU53, all development projects will be required to go through design review by the Planning Commission. So, that's a general plan policy. So, that will rule over your zoning code anyway. If you look at consistency, this first piece of it talks about what is a node. So, the general plan actually defines the node. It defines it essentially as an area where you would have commercial office, industrial type of uses near an intersection or near the highway. It frowns on strip development along the highway. Beddable Road C1 overlay area is located adjacent to US 101 and limits development to the existing 29 acres out of the 114 acres, or whatever I told you earlier, was the total acreage the owner has at that location. The site is easily accessible to 101. General plan policy 5.3 requires the, any development to be subject to design review by the County Planning Commission. So, these are general plan policies that are governing what happens at the zoning level. If you remember, the C3 code had all of these things incorporated into the code section. But even without them, the general plan policies will still regulate this. And then LU54, it requires the developers to reflect a cohesive vision for the node. In other words, we don't want plans to come in in a piecemeal fashion, so you've got one building, and then two years later, you've got another building. We really don't care how they build it or what timeframe they build it over. What we do care about is what it's going to look like on a comprehensive basis. So, you, as a planning commission, want to see a comprehensive plan of what is going to happen over time, even if it gets phased. And so, this policy in the general plan requires a cohesive vision of the development of the site plan for the area. And it also talks about protecting scenic resources along the highway and some other things, and there's some other policies in the general plan about that. 5.5 discourages strip development, so we don't want to see long strips of development along the highway, and we want to have ways to buffer those through landscaping and lighting restrictions, et cetera. The C1 overlay area is located in an area that is consistent with Figure 3.5, which we already talked about and I showed you. It's 29 acres, and it will require the Planning Commission to review a site plan or any kind of design review that goes on for that comprehensive vision of that node. The general plan policy 5.6 is a policy that encourages visitor-oriented commercial uses. It promotes local history, local economy, agriculture, wines, recreation, market locally-produced agricultural products. And the C1 node does that. Essentially, it's serving commercial uses of hotels, motels, which are visitor-oriented uses that could be used to promote the local history, local economy, and market local-produced agricultural products. So, that becomes a theme from the general plan that you'll want to be reviewing when you review any kind of site planning or master planning that comes forward to the Planning Commission for a project at this location. The objective is to encourage limited commercial services to meet the needs of rural citizens as well as the needs of weekend and recreational uses. From a sequence standpoint, we talked about this the last time we worked on the C3 code section. The addendum has been prepared, an addendum has been prepared specifically for the Beddable Road action that you're going to take tonight, the C1 action. An addendum need not be circulated to the public, but it needs to be considered by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors before they take their action. So, part of your action tonight will be to make sure that you pass a resolution that says that you considered the addendum. So, as a part of that, and again, that's a recommendation, you considered it, and it's a recommendation of to move it forward or not move it forward with the board. With regard to the addendum, it was determined through the environmental analysis completed that there would be no new substantially more severe impacts than those identified in the certified 2035 General Plan EIR. Development potential under proposed C1 district fits within growth predictions considered in the general plan FEIR 2035 build-out analysis. In that build-out analysis, I went over with you when we did the C3 code, it was pretty extensive. We had basically an eight FAR for development, which would have produced about a million square feet of development at this location. And the general plan limits that, going from the general plan to the code, the code limits that to much less than what the general plan allows. So, if you remember, we had these fairly high, like 4 million square feet of development that could occur at the four nodes, about a million each, and the code section was much stricter than the general plan. So, in this particular case, the C1 section is much stricter than the general plan. So, it only allows about 40% lot coverage and 35 feet in height. So, it's a stricter, stricter level than the general plan, and therefore, the general plan analysis is adequate for reviewing this project. The actions you'll look at tonight that I've talked about, again, a resolution to consider the addendum, and then a resolution to recommend to the Board of Supervisors adopting an ordinance to change the zoning map at Beddable Road to add the commercial thoroughfare C1 overlay to the existing regional commercial. Is there any questions at this point?
Commissioners?
Right now.
No.
We'll bring you back after public hearing.
One other note I wanted to make to the Planning Commission is that in the addendum, there are some particular mitigations that are called out, and those mitigations have to do with restrictions on landscaping, signage, lighting, and some of those things. So, if you hadn't seen those, or you want to refer to them during the hearing, they're in Section D of the addendum, and there are several pages of them, and they're, in a lot of ways, mirror what the county's been wanting to see as a comprehensive master plan. Look for each one of these notes. So, thank you, and again, I'm available for any questions as we go.
Thank you. Can we open the public comic? Anybody wish to speak? Figure cards, okay.
From the clerk's box, may I ask a general how many cards we may have?
Six currently. Six on the side.
Hi, thank you. I'm from Prunedale. When I was circulating the petition, I told a lot of people, the reason I was doing that was because I don't want to, another Prunedale on 101. We got enough traffic already. And also, on a personal level, I've had a close person die of cancer at a young age, so I'm sympathetic to the company that's doing this. However, I think that part of mitigation of cancer is floodplains and water, and so it seems like a contradiction to be building on a floodplain in the name of cancer. I've got my own charities and that I contribute to, and I appreciate that this corporation wants to contribute to this, their particular charity. But I don't, as I say, I've got my own, and I think everybody has their own, and so that's everyone's prerogative to have a charity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Coran.
Good evening. My name's Mary Shaw Coran. I live in Aromas on the San Benito side. And the reason I'm here is to ask you to oppose the C1 rezoning, because it's really an end run around the referendum that was just put on the ballot yesterday. It's really a slap in the face of the voters, and I also want to say that if you do approve it, the voters are going to be pretty upset about this, because it's obvious to a lot of us that this overlay was totally unnecessary. It's really a scheme to, basically circumvent the referendum. If you look at the general plan, the map of the general plan, there was a C3, you know, there's a dot. We are opposing that, but the general plan does not have anything about the C1. So, you guys are going through this elaborate process of circumventing the will of the people. And I just want to also mention that you folks have been appointed by your supervisors, and maybe you don't care, but I'm sure the supervisors who appointed you, or any one of you who are running for office, should care about what the voters think of this effort to circumvent the will of the people. It's going to be very, I think, political suicide for anyone who's going to be supporting the C1 rezoning. So, I urge you to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Andy Coran.
Yes, my name is Andy Shaw Coran, and I was a petition circulator. I collected many hundreds of signatures and spoke to probably well over 1,000 people throughout the county in the process. And we talked a lot about the development in the county, and about traffic in the county, and about the concerns of changing the nature of the 101 corridor, what you call the regional commercial district in the C3 zoning. And I can tell you, the sentiment is overwhelmingly opposed to... And I can tell you, the sentiment is overwhelmingly opposed to further changing, transforming that area, and that's why it was frankly not difficult to get people's signatures. Under California law, we have provisions in our constitution to allow the people to participate directly in decisions when they have concerns about them. And I can tell you, the people in this county have deep concerns about that. So to turn around at this point and find another way to do exactly what the people are raising questions about, I think is contemptuous of the people in this county. As one person I talked to, it said it constitutes spitting in the face of the citizenry of this people, of this county. Now, you can have, you can be for this project and think, you know, and be willing to make the case to the people as it moves forward, but the idea of making the decision that the people have asked to be participating in a moot decision, I think is really, really shows that we've drifted a very far distance away from that pledge of allegiance that we started our meeting with, and respect for democracy, respect for what we have in our state, which is mechanisms for people to have their say. And it's, I believe this is the first citizens' referendum in this county's history, and, and for, as I said, for people to find a way to make that a non-issue. I, I just think you should reflect a great deal upon it. It wouldn't hurt you one bit to put this off until the people have had a chance to speak on the issue in March. I don't think, I don't think cancer will be solved before that, and I don't think our issues of development need to be resolved before the people have a chance to speak in March. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Morris Lopez.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez from San Juan Batista. I have very little to add to what the four previous speakers added. You know, I agree with what they all said a hundred percent. I attended the board of supervisors meeting yesterday morning, and it was very remarkable and very uplifting to see the majority of the supervisors applaud us on the democratic process. And I too hope that this will continue and let the people have their voice. They've spoken loud and clear that they are against this. I too have other reservations, being a medical health provider for the last twenty years to practice medicine in California, is that renaming this, this project as the Children's Cancer Funding Group, Inc., just reeks of something nefarious. Yes, we all hate cancer. We hate children to have cancer and adults, but there's just something that in midstream that they would allow and change the title of what they're doing. It just, it just throws up a huge red flag for me. And as Mr. Starkweather said, we all have our special funding and charities that we give to, but to have to force people to look at this and sort of play on the heartstrings of the public to change and amend our general plan just reeks of something suspicious to me. Thank you. Let the people speak.
Thank you.
Jeannie Echenique, and I live in Royal Oaks, North Monterey County, and I just can't do anything but agree with my cohorts there on this. And I have an analogy in my head that I've been working on since the board of supervisors meeting yesterday, and I can't get it out of my head. I'm a dog lover. Every day I have to pick up after my sweet dogs, and you know what I'm talking about. And even if we pour maple syrup on it, the dogs tell me it's still what they put there. And that's how I feel about this end run around the will of the people. It's really nasty. It's not nice at all, and I'm sorry that you're all involved in it, I suspect. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Tom Karas, or the current last speaker.
Hi, my name is Tom Karas, and I live in Aromas. Recently, more than eighty petition signature gatherers collected over four thousand signatures of voters in San Benito County. Most of the voters were not aware of the commercial rezoning planned along Highway one oh one when I spoke to them, and that's a common experience for the most part. After explaining the rezoning ordinance nine ninety-one would allow for construction of motels, shops, restaurants, and gas stations in these nodes, most of the voters signed the petition so they could vote against the rezoning of this agglant to commercial. Given the overwhelming sentiment against commercialization along Highway one oh one, I ask that the planning commission does not recommend the rezoning of the parcels at Betabell to C one. Finally, there may have been some misunderstanding on the part of petition gatherers and those who signed the petition, and that some may have believed that the referendum would prevent commercial rezoning of the parcels in the four nodes along Highway one oh one. Considering agenda item five tonight, it appears the referendum does not prevent the commercial rezoning. The commercial rezoning of these nodes can only be prevented by removing them from the general plan. Therefore, the planning commission should recommend amending the general plan to remove the four commercial nodes along Highway one oh one. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think the last speaker said it clearly. The San Benito County two thousand thirty-five general plan created these commercial zones on Highway one oh one. I'm sorry, Dan DeVries, San Juan Batista. And I'm also the attorney for all commercial node owners. The San Benito County general plan that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen identified these four areas as being appropriate for commercial development. That general plan process included all of the stakeholders in Aromas and San Juan Batista and Hollister and San Benito County. They had a booth at the county fair. They had stakeholders, and the list of people that were involved in that process is exhaustive, and I can provide it to you. And it's at the very beginning of the, the general plan document, right, Michael? Everyone that was involved in the general plan process identifying these four areas as being appropriate for commercial is listed. That happened five years ago, almost five years ago. Now, the only question is what set of rules should apply to the building of stuff in those four areas? Do you want C three, which is a beautiful, amazing ordinance? Amazing ordinance that provides the most community input that has ever been seen in the state of California along Highway one oh one. Design review, architectural themes, cohesiveness, restrictiveness on these plots. It's the most restrictive in the state of California along Highway one oh one. Do you want C three, or do you want something else? I'll remind the county of this also. The county has an obligation under the California government code to implement its general plan. The general plan was adopted five years ago and designated these areas as commercial. Now, the county has to implement some kind of zoning so these people can do something with their properties. So the question to you and to the electorate on March third is going to be, what do you want? C one or C three? These C one applications, this is the first one, and here's a preview. There's going to be more. There are going to be more. The C one is a backstop. If C three fails, then all of these owners are going to go C one. C three is better. C three is beautiful. C three is amazing. We want to save C three. That's what we want. But make no mistake, Highway one oh one is going to be developed. May I have another second, Mr. Chair?
No, that's okay, DeVries.
See, Highway one oh one is going to be developed. It's just a matter of what rules are going to apply to that.
Okay, thank you.
And I was also under the impression that the people had spoken and was going to be voted on. That's what I told people that signed the petition. And now I hear gobbledygook that it's all been changed. Do you really want the people of the county to see no democracy with this? Thank you very much. I secede my time to anybody else that wants to speak. Thanks. Did Dan fill his?
He's about to.
What they're trying to do is change the general plan.
Okay, Mr. DeVries. So, any more speakers? Any more speaker cards?
I think this gentleman.
No, 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 no. Okay, then we.
Maybe let people know that a speaker card is a courtesy, but it's not required. If you do have persons that wish to speak to the matter, they may, and they can fill out the card.
Yes. If you want to speak on this one, you can still get up there and fill the card, so we don't have any. But for the rest of the meeting, if you want to speak on an agenda item, please fill your card, so we don't waste a lot of time. And move on.
Sam Homke, I didn't come here for this, but I've been paying attention to Betabell and myself. I don't see how traffic is going to increase. You're going to be taking people off the road, and I just, the cause that it's for, it's going to be donating more money than anybody else in the country. So I'm for it, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. Bring it to the commissioners. Any questions, commissioners?
I just had a question for Mr. Groves regarding the E I R. Is there additional work that will be done beyond the addendum?
Michael Groves, C M C Planning Group, representing the county staff and the county. It's a really good question, and that appendix D, or that section D that I referred you to in the addendum, it has a portion in there that requires further environmental review for any site plan that comes forward, or any development project that comes forward, master plan, site plan, whatever it is, as well as the design review.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that to be clear for the public.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for you as well, Mr. Groves. I think Mr. DeVries also mentioned that the other, the other node participants would likely go through a, a C one zone request as well. What's the urgency behind Betabell, and why not wait until March to understand what the referendum may, may decide? Because maybe the, the C one overlay would not be necessary if the public approves C three.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that, because that's really their business. They made an application, so everybody's clear about this. The county didn't just conjure up the idea that we're going to do C one. They made an application for C one, and we're processing that application as we're required to do as the county of San Benito. So I would defer that question to the applicant.
Okay. Can you take that, Mr. DeVries?
C one is a backstop. These owners were designated as commercial in the two thousand thirty-five San Benito County general plan. They, the county has an obligation under California law to implement its general plan. So if it's not going to be C three, then what is it going to be? There are only two options, C one or C two. The county determined that C one is most appropriate. But these counties, these owners want an ability to build. They wanted an ability to develop. I think C three is far preferable than C one, myself. I held that opinion. But they want a backstop. They want an ability to go forward. So that's the, is that, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, but the, the vote will be in March, correct?
Yes.
So, and the preference from the owners would be C three, correct? Not C one?
Yes.
So, I understand trying to do a backstop, but not knowing what the public's going to vote on, wouldn't it be better to focus on influencing the public to vote for C three instead of focusing on a C one?
It would, but, but.
Just, just trying to understand.
I don't want to, well, let me, let me put all my cards on the table right now. The question that we want the electorate and the community, including Andy and Mary, to consider is, do you want C one, or do you want C three? It's going to get built. It's going to get done. What set of rules would you prefer to be applied?
No, please.
I, I, I know their answer. Their answer is no development at all. That's a general plan question. That general plan question was answered, asked and answered five years ago. They're trying to amend the general plan. The last speaker on their behalf said that. I would encourage the planning commission to amend the general plan. Well, the general plan is not amended. Right now, the general plan calls for four commercial areas on one oh one to be developed. What set of rules should apply to that development? It's, it's incumbent upon the county to say what those rules are. Is it C one, C two, C three? What is it? We came up with C three. C three is beautiful. It's amazing. It requires, it requires a master plan application, design review, themes, all of this stuff.
Understood that. So, second question related to the owner. So you mentioned that the other three commercial nodes would come forward with the C one request. What's the timing of that?
Sequentially.
That doesn't help me. What, what's the timing of that? Is it going to be next month? Is it going to be March? Is it going to be June?
I think you can expect them to follow in the months to follow, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't mean to be obtuse, but what I can say is that all of the owners are interested in a backstop if C three fails in March.
Understand.
They want an, an, an ability to go forward.
I'm just trying to understand the urgency behind this request at this point in time. And that it's a backstop in your, in what you mentioned, this is a, a backstop. This is, this is a potential issue that may not, may not exist in March, but you're going forward with a request to the county at this time.
And that's right, and there will be others to follow. That's true.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
Just to clarify, as I was reading through the document that we were given for the planning commission tonight, in here, one of the justifications, or the main justification for bringing forth the C one is the fact that since C three has been forwarded to, by referendum, to the voters, that it is the right of the property owner to have timely decisions made such that their planning of their own financial situation, their own planning situation, their own production be unimpeded. And that, that is why the C one has been brought forward. Am I mistaken?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, it's almost precisely what I was going to say to you is that just on a general level, I can't speak to the owners of each. just on a general level, I can't speak to the owners of each individual node. But what I can speak to is that when the general plan was adopted in 2015, the board asked me for a list of implementation tools that needed to be put in place to implement the general plan. I gave them a list and I prioritized it for them in terms of urgency, et cetera. Zoning was one of those pieces. It was pretty high on the list. The board chose not to tackle zoning and chose to do it on an individual basis, meaning that as projects came forward, they would tackle it. So, from the landowner's perspective, they didn't have zoning for their property. So, the board basically directed landowners, if they wanted to have zoning for their property, they needed to apply for it. And that they would pay for the environmental review, the processing, et cetera, because the board didn't really have the budget to implement a new zoning code at that point. So that just gives you some background, and that's why you're seeing this, these things coming forward. So the landowners, the, the county did not initiate C3 zoning. The landowners initiated the C3 zoning, just like they're now initiating the C1 zoning. Not that that's a bad thing. It's just that the county board said, no, we're not gonna do it. We're gonna leave it to you to pay for and do. And that's what's happening. So that gives you some context to it.
Now, I got a question for you. So all those areas are already zoned for commercial. Am I correct?
All four, all four nodes are zoned C3 with the boundaries that we had shown you the first time and were adopted by the board.
And as in the general plan.
And they're designated in the general plan as commercial regional. And they're all zoned C3 currently. There's no three code zoning section. There's a C3 code zoning section that has been suspended that you recommended to the board and was adopted by the board. Do I think it's a good section? Well, I'm a little prejudiced that we wrote it. But, yeah, I, you know, a couple of the commissioners went to the APA conference this year, and I, I was so pleased to see them there. But most of the conversation at the APA conference, excuse me, I'm using an acronym, I'm sorry, American Planning Association State Conference. Most of the conversation statewide, from even down from the governor's office, was we want to see objective criteria in your zoning codes. We want to see these zoning codes expanded to design criteria, objective design criteria, stricter standards, and we want to allow for, obviously, more housing in the state. That's not necessarily a piece of this, but it's, it's a little piece of it. But it was mostly about those objective standards. Well, that C3 code section has more objective standards than most code sections I've ever seen, number one. And number two, it would allow for development with a heavy scrutiny, as was asked earlier, about environmental review, going through master plans and standards, et cetera. So I think that's the conversation that, that has to go on in the county to come up to that March vote, is what do you really want in terms of it? And again, the, the people will speak to what they want, and I think that's where it's left. But in the meantime, there's no, there's a C3 section there, and this particular zoning code in, in the County of San Benito has a very unique thing in it, and that's an overlay zone called C1. And C1 is a thoroughfare overlay zone. And so it's meant to be on thoroughfares. And so that's what the applicant came forward with and said, well, we want to use that zoning now.
Thank you. Commissioners, more questions?
Yes, I'd like to introduce the, the concern that all... How many zones were there all around the county that were designated for commercial zoning? How many nodes?
How, how many dots on the map?
Yes. How many dots on the map around the county?
Boy.
There was four on Highway 101, and there was a number of other ones on 25 Fairview, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's close to 20.
And so it was in the, the thinking of those who put the general plan together, which is designated as, or it's mandated by the state that a general plan be put together by any county, correct?
Correct.
And that all of these concerns about growth, whether it's commercial or it's housing or it's your sewage or your water, all of those things need to be addressed and put before the public in a manner that is understandable and is voted on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then, it would make sense that the entire county is concerned about the zoning of these commercial areas because it will, it will affect the commercial potential of the entire county as we go down the road.
That's correct.
So what's happening here on 101 is exemplary. What we need to look at is what has traditionally been an area of commerce, which the Bedabell area and the Y Road has traditionally been commerce. The 101 Stockyard has traditionally been commerce. And across the road at the RV Park, that has been there for a long time. All of these areas, as well as near the Red Barn, these are areas where there have been vacation spots for a long time. So it makes sense that we sincerely look at those areas as viable and vital to the economy of our county. And I think that that's what the Planning Commission is here for, is to make sure that it's not just particular aesthetics, but that the aesthetics are worked on and that with the C3 zone, which we very diligently worked on to be extremely well-suited to the character of the county, that we move forward with that. Is there anything that you would add to that?
I would just say that when the general plan was developed, first off, I got into the general plan about halfway or three quarters of the way into it, if you remember. There was another consultant that was working with the county to prepare the general plan. They had numerous committee meetings that, these are Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, that went on for about three years. And then they produced a general plan and brought it to the Planning Commission and the board, and the general plan had all the nodes in it already. And one of the big themes of that general plan as it was brought forward, and then I got involved right at that point when the board looked at it the first time and said, we don't like the direction of it, we don't like the policies, et cetera, and we want to do something different here. And then I was brought in to help correct the direction, I guess is the best way to put it. All of the nodes were already in the general plan and in the general plan maps. Those weren't added afterwards. There was some shifting around of some of the nodes as the process went on. But one of the big themes that was in there was trying to capture what San Benito County is. San Benito County wine, San Benito County recreation, San Benito County as a, as a great place to live. And I think there was a feeling among the citizens at that time and at the board at that time that there was not any way to capture that except for to have information centers out on Highway 101, have some commercial out on Highway 101 where people, right now, they go from the Santa Clara County border to the Monterey County border. There's nothing in between. They, there's no stopping. They don't even know they're passing through San Benito County, other than if they catch the sign, right? And so I think the theme at the time from the board was, we want to promote commerce of San Benito County, and we want to promote that through these stops that are along Highway 101 and have each one of those stops be required to have an information center and be able to educate people about what's going on in San Benito County. And that, and we, and we followed through and put that into the code section, the C3 code section.
The commercial node, regional. To, to the commissioner, we count about 15 to 18 different nodes throughout the, throughout the general plan maps with neighborhood commercial, commercial thoroughfare, and the CR commercial regional. So there's several designations. But about 18, let's call them 15 to 18 points of commerce that the economic development element in the general plan forecast is being, will to be explored.
And all of those were initiated in order to bring up the economy and the possibilities for vital business?
It's explicit in the economic development element of the county general plan.
Correct. And it'll benefit all of the different populations around those nodes, just like any state park or any federal park.
That's an editorial comment. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have no more questions at this point.
I don't have a question. I just would encourage my fellow commissioners and everybody here that, aside from what's, you know, what this issue has become, it's become highly politicized. I urge that we look at specifically as it's presented in front of us in the agenda item that we're looking at, you know, as Planning Commission, what's in the best interest of the general plan and the county. Also, taking into consideration what everybody here has said, has been saying over the past, you know, a couple of meetings and looking at that kind of mitigation process that we've also kind of been involved with. I think it's important to kind of annotate, because it's easy to get lost in, you know, the referendum talks and all that. And although that is definitely factors in, you know, this issue, it is not for us to decide on the democratic process of the referendum. That is a separate and aside event that may or may not be happening, again, aside, independent from this. I just want to create a clear independence on whatever we are voting on, to be precise on the issue and not get lost in the midst of the, the, you know, general assumptions and feelings. As we know, there's a lot of opposing sides here. So just more of a general reminder that we are specifically looking at the overlay of a C1 to the C3 district that has been approved by the Board of Supervisors, but now is in, you know, question for a referendum, but still looking specifically at the C1 overlay.
And on one of the several properties.
Yes.
So I hear a motion. Commissioners?
Do we have resolution numbers?
Or just a recommendation?
Yes, we do. We have the, we have the book, we have the binder, Ms. Having, that has the resolution, so we can let you know the next number in line. I'm sorry? The next resolution's in number, okay.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-21, a resolution of the Planning Commission of San Benito County, having considered the Bedabell Road commercial node rezone, adding a commercial thoroughfare C1 overlay addendum to the 2035 General Plan Update FEIR.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
So motion carries 3-2?
3-2, yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-22, a resolution of the San Benito County Planning Commission recommending to the Board of Supervisors adoption of an ordinance to approve and rezone the real property described herein to add the commercial thoroughfare C1 overlay district to the existing regional commercial C3 district.
A second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 3-2. And that's that item, that's that item ready to move on to the next agenda.
Move to the next item.
Did you want to take a few minute pause while we set up and maybe?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break.
I have all my paperwork upside down.
County standard for that street would be sixty feet, they're proposing fifty-six. So it's slightly substandard, or not substandard, but it's less than standard. And then the project also provides this stub connection to the county's main inch yard, corporate yard, for, you know, future connection if and when it's needed. Uh, let's see, what else? I think the other thing that I would say is that this is the area here that's the no-build zone with the, with the steep slopes averaging around thirty, thirty feet. And so, as we said, there is public infrastructure available. Sewer water would be from the city of Hollister. There's an existing storm drainage system basin over on Riverview One that this project would connect to. Access would be from South Side Road. We talked about dedication improvements in the new, the new street. Just a couple of points on the housing element. So the housing element is actually part of the general plan. It's not in the same document. You may have to hunt for the housing element because it's pretty substantially, a pretty substantial size itself, but I think it's actually chapter five, I think, but it's, but it's fairly large. But it is a part of the, of the general plan. And the housing element is really intended to provide a, an understanding of the, the needs for local housing, as well as provide strategies on how to meet those needs. And so it lays out various programs and policies for how to achieve that and achieve various development goals that have been established, and that's a highly technical process that I won't even pretend to get into. But the bottom line is, is that the total allocation for unincorporated San Benito County by 2023 is eight hundred and thirty-seven units. And then that last bullet is providing you information on the number of very low and low-income units that are needed for unincorporated county. And you can see there, it's, you know, over, over three hundred units, and this project is building twenty-four. So it's, you know, it, it's helping, but, but there's, but there is a, a need for affordable housing in an unincorporated county. So there is a density bonus request. And density bonus requests are permitted, actually mandated by state law. And the idea is, is that for projects that provide various levels of affordable housing, you get various concessions, or waivers, or, or, or benefits deviations that are intended to allow the project to be more financially feasible, because it is for affordable housing, to encourage affordable housing. County code also has provisions for density bonus requests. And, and density bonuses are actually encouraged by the housing element. There's a program, and it's two-dash-one in the housing element, that, that encourages the county to use density bonus requests. And as I said, by state law, they're really a mandate. It's almost like a, a right that projects have, as long as they meet the criteria. So in this particular case, in the density bonus request letters attached to the staff report from, from the applicant's attorney that is making the request, and it's essentially distills down to these six items here, they're asking for three regulatory concessions. One is to not have to underground the, the, the overhead utilities along the South Side Road frontage, and that's really because of the cost. Now, there is some options that the county is exploring. There are other funding sources that may be able to be utilized so that they could be undergrounded at the time the project's being constructed. The onsite utilities will be undergrounded. Yes? Yeah, thank you. Another concession that's being requested is that the subdivision ordinance in the county has a three-to-one width-to-depth ratio. And because of the, the, the constraints and the shape of this particular property, it's not possible to lot it out in such a way to meet this, especially for those lots along the west side of the project that include the, the steep slope area, the non-buildable area. And, and again, that's by design, so that they end up in private yards and don't have to be maintained by a homeowners' association. So that's why they're included in those lots, as opposed to some sort of HOA configuration. As we said earlier, typically, if, if sewer and water are available, the county would look for a mix of development types. They're proposing single-family detached only, so there's a request for a concession there. And then there's three waivers that are being requested. One is to reduce that internal public street from sixty feet to fifty-six, which staff supports in this particular case. It's not going to compromise safety. They're still going to do, you know, curb's got her sidewalk, street tree, so essentially it's, it's not a big deal. Also, a reduction in the R1 setbacks, again, front side and rear. I think the minimums in the front are going to be, is it eight, you guys? Or do I have that wrong? I can't remember. But anyway, it's reduced setbacks. And then lastly, it's a, a waiver for the provision of onsite recreation. And again, that's an intent, the intent behind that's to keep it affordable. Sequel-wise, because this was used, previously developed as a, as a hospital site, previously used, and there's no other environmental constraints, bottom line is, is that staff's recommending, and with currents from county council's office, that we use SEQUA guidelines exception, that basically is, is stating that it's obvious that there's not going to be any significant, the potential for, any potential significant environmental impacts out there because of the, of the project. Housekeeping matter, we've revised the, the tentative map, the draft tentative map resolution that was attached to the packet as attachment four. That was drafted, we drafted that for board approval, thinking that if the general plan amendment and there's a rezoning needed to go to the board, perhaps they should just approve the subdivision map as well. But based on the advice of council, we've pulled that back. And so that resolution's been retooled, so that it's actually you, as the commission, which you typically would do, approving the tentative subdivision map. But we've added a condition, number six, which I would call a condition precedent, that, that the map's only good if the board approves the general plan amendment and the rezoning. And if the board does something else, it would just be sent back to, to you for further consideration. If they denied it, for instance, then the map would die also. We've also added some additional recitals, better, better worded, laid out the, the SEQUA findings. And as I say, we've, we've distributed copies of that revised resolution to all of you a bit earlier. So with that, Mr. Chair, staff's recommending that you fund the project exempt from SEQUA, that you adopt a resolution to recommend the board of supervisors approve the general plan text amendment, and the rezoning to R1, and then that you also adopt a resolution granting the density bonus request and approving the vesting tentative subdivision map with standard and special conditions, Mr. Chair. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, any question?
Uh, just a point of clarity. So you're saying that the road depth typically, or the width of the road is sixty feet being reduced to fifty-six? And that's, I'm assuming it's because of the setbacks, right? And the, kind of the landscape of the, the plot, causing the reduction, right? The limitations of that?
Right, yeah. It's, it's just, yeah, with the, with the site dimensions and so forth, and trying to get the lotting pattern to work out, and the internal circulation system to work out in such a way, that, that, that four-foot reduction, especially when you consider the amount of aerial surface that's taken up by that internal street, that really starts to make a, a large difference. And as we said, from staff's perspective, it's not really compromising safety or, or anything like that. And, and honestly, in some respects, the, the, the existing county standard of sixty feet for a road like this is probably more than what currently would be practiced otherwise, or utilized, given the whole, you know, complete streets, smart streets approach to things. And so staff is very supportive of the fifty-six feet.
Thank you. No questions?
No questions? Okay, we'll open up a public hearing. Any speakers? No speaker cards?
Should we have the applicant speak to, speak to their project?
Hi, everyone, how you doing? I'm Sonny Flores. I'm the executive director at Community Service Development Corporation. We're an affordable housing company serving San Benito County. Can you get closer? Sorry. Serving San Benito County. Again, we've been, I'd like to thank the commission and staff for moving forward with this project and considering, accepting the project. We've been working on this for quite some time. Originally, we started the site development, working with the county. Requests or proposals came from the board of supervisors for a concept for the site. So we submitted for a self-help development. So we've worked with the county staff to come up with the twenty-four units that will be sold to first-time, low and very low homebuyers through the USDA mutual self-help program. So it's a national sweat equity program. We'll have groups of eight to ten families building their own homes. They have to put in about forty hours a week each, and build about sixty percent of the homes. And it's been one of the biggest affordable housing programs in Hollister, South County Housing. And Seth Capron have built over three hundred and fifty homes in Hollister. And Community Service Development took on their grant a few years back, so this will be our first project. So just, again, thanks a lot. Thanks for your consideration. And San Benito Engineering, Ann Hall's here. She can answer any technical questions.
Questions, anyone?
I just wanted to, I know there was a question about setback, and it was, it is an eight-foot setback to the front of the house, but it's eighteen to the garage, so the garage is setback and allowing for, you know, parking in the driveway. And then the one, the question in regard to the road width, I would agree with what Mr. Boyd said. The narrower width is more in keeping with this more urban-type density, and it's more typical in a lot of communities these days in the full sixty-foot width. But I'm available if you have any other questions.
Commissioners?
How close is this to a park?
Microphone, please.
Part of what we provided on this project was the sidewalk going down to, you can see the corner of Hospital Road. So then it will connect with the, you know, it'll be across the street from the sidewalk being put in as part of Sunnyside Estates. And I believe there's a park in Sunnyside. So part of, part of what we were doing here was giving them the ability to get to a park at the next subdivision over. So we're providing a safe path of travel.
So there's a, yes, safe path, and it's within ten minutes?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Anyone questions?
I don't know if I want to take a whack at this one. Three resolutions?
I have laryngitis, so I won't say much. I wish I could wax poetic about this project, but as Sonny mentioned, this is all low and very low-income housing. The self-help housing program has created a wonderful opportunity for hundreds of families in the county. And the idea with, it was a challenging site to, to develop, to lay out. But, you know, part of the idea with narrowing the streets and bringing the houses forward is also to create a more intimate community. There's front porches on all of the, the elevations of the houses. So when you're walking down the sidewalk, and someone's sitting on the porch, there's direct connectivity with your neighbors. Anyway, thank you for your consideration of the project.
Thank you. No? Okay, we close. Public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Need the, the last slide from Daryl back up there.
Oh, you need Daryl back there?
Well, just that last slide. I think that shows what we're, just that last slide where you had...
We're going to read the motion, Daryl.
Yes. Thank you, that, that...
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we accept. Uh, let's see. Here we go.
There's three. It's right there.
Those are the three things.
Find the project exempt from SEQUA. Adopt a resolution recommending the board of supervisors approve the general plan amendment, change the zoning to single-family R1, adopt a resolution granting the density bonus request, and approving the VTSM with conditions of approval.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's going to be a nice project.
Yes, yes.
Good job.
Good job, Sonny. Keep the other ones, number seven. PL, PLN eighteen hundred and thirty-three.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This, this next project is, will be presented by Planner Richard Felsing from our planning department. And I'll, I'll let you engage Mr. Felsing with the introduction of the project there out in the Pinotage Valley.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Richard Felsing, and I'm here to present a, a use permit, a conditional use permit for the Pinotage RV Park, PLN eighteen zero zero thirty-three, which is an application to install and operate a twenty-one-stall RV park behind the Pinotage Inn at twenty-nine nine sixty Pinotage Road, about forty-nine mi, about, excuse me, about forty miles from Hollister proper, on two-point-five acres of the six-point-five-three-acre parcel. And the Pinotage Valley is, so this parcel is located in the Pinotage Valley, about midway east to west on the southern flank of the foothills lining, lining the valley. And it is an area with a wealth of biological resources, unique habitats, and sensitive species, and I try the wrong way to see them up close. This, now, I have to admit, this may not be the same species of kangaroo rat that we've got up in the Pinotage Hills, but it's pretty interesting that they're so fast enough to fend off a rattlesnake in mid-strike. So we've got, our species is a giant kangaroo rat, and they've got some really neat burrows if you ever have a chance to get up there. And in any case, let's deal with the project itself. Again, the zoning there is neighborhood commercial, C-two, and it has been referred to as an overlay district. We've heard about that earlier today on what would be AR. But whether you want to deal with either one, an RV park is a conditional use permit in either the C-two or the AR. And so I wanted to get you a quick vicinity map, Highway twenty-five to Pisinas, and then the Pinotage Road over the mountains, all the way to the middle of the Pinotage Valley, the midway east to west, but on the southern flank of the lower foothills. And in the spring, you get some really nice sunflowers there. So that, of course, the yellow is Pinotage Road. And this is the six-point-five-three-acre site. You've got the Pinotage Bar, the Pinotage Inn, a bar and restaurant right here. You know, I think it's a garage here, an accessory dwelling unit here, prefabricated. And you can see just by this aerial, you know, that the, the site, the parcel of property has had some intensive uses over the years, right? So it's been heavily impacted. Once you're on-site, you can recognize there's some storage, or equipment storage, some old pallets on-site, maybe an old, really old refuse heap or, or burn pit going back, you know, more than a century probably. And more specifically, though, and more of interest really, is the, you can see how this area has been disced for, for fire suppression purposes. You've got bare dirt over here, hard-packed dirt, and essentially, you know, a concrete driveway here, and a, and a hard-packed dirt driveway here. And, and, you know, a regular yard with some outdoor seating and eating areas. So, you know, it's been, according to the commercial district review that enlarged the living quarters in two thousand and three, the bar's been continuously operating for about eighty-six years now. They, locally a reliable source, according to the staff report in two thousand and three, said that it had been operating for seventy-five years, so I just did a little math. And, you know, so it's had a really wide range of uses, including, you know, it sold gas at one point, and its underground storage tanks were removed in nineteen seventy-six. They could get a witness, saw that happen. And, you know, so the, you know, there's a wide range of accessory structures that were moved in two thousand and three, and a wide range of equipment storage purposes. Equipment, there's a wide range of, of storage purposes that the lot's been used for, and in, in general. It's seen a lot, a lot of intensive uses over the years relative to the landscape, for example. Now, the project, we believe, is conforms to the general plan. Specifically, it qualifies as a support use, directly supporting agriculture, in the following sense. Overnight accommodations at this location will well-serve commuters who are driving over the mountains from either Los Bon, Bon, excuse me, Los Banios or Hollister, to work at the Pinotage Valley Solar Facility, or to work at the applicant's organic farm or other ag operations in the area. And the general, the general plan, especially this particular LEU land use policy three-point-six, you know, specifies that directly supporting agriculture is, you know, strongly encouraged, if not incentivized, in the plan. And if, for anyone who's tried to find enough farm labor to continue operating, you know, making it possible for people to get there and not have to double their vehicle miles traveled over the, over the, over the mountains that night, you know, they could conceivably stay overnight and reduce their travel time by about half. And the same goes for people who are visiting. So land use policy three-point-seven, people want to visit, you know, the, and, and take in the sights, the landscape, and the, get a closer look at some of the really unique creatures and sensitive species in the area. And so having a platform where, you know, a tourist could come in, stay overnight, and then make that second leg to Bealam Lands up in Pinotage Road, uh, excuse me, the Pinotage Hills, or the Griswold Hills, or even to the Pinnacles off to the southeast, southwest a little bit. It makes, you know, it's, it's an, a way to enhance access to what the general plan sees as a really important resource that's underutilized, because people can't get there, right? We've got a really, a lot of unique creatures, and capitalizing on that would be following through on the general plan, essentially. Now, the neighborhood commercial zoning wants to serve existing markets in these small unincorporated communities by reducing unnecessary retail trips to the, the cities and the commercial centers. As long as those uses are not detrimental to health, safety, peace, and comfort, with conditions of approval involved or applied, we could look at approving a, an RV park in this, in this instance. This is the proposed site map. And we've got, they're proposing to expand septic and, and also the water supply. The, you know, specific of interest, specifically of interest, may be the enhanced fire suppression capacity. So we've got more wharf hydrants, increased water tanks, a new well. And operationally, there'll be twenty-four sit, seven onsite management of the existing managers of the Pinotage Inn in front of the, in front of the, the RV park facility. And I counted, I know they're going to remove one tree, but I counted the ones they plan to plant, and it looks like they've got about ninety-one. So they'll shade the RV stalls, but also screen the entire facility along the perimeter of the property to buffer the visual impacts, or, you know, save the, the scenic qualities of the landscape that people are being attracted to the area for. And get out of your car, because it's a whole different thing once you're standing on the land and looking around. It's just amazing, so. In any case, this also addresses some of the operations piece, but I think I hit all points. They're going to try to do a, Mr. Saunders is going to try to do a soft launch, where they've got seven full hookups along the row of RV stalls closest to the Pinotage Inn. But as, you know, demand justifies it, they're going to, they'll, they'll have full hook, excuse me, they'll have water hookups to everything. But they will add septic and electricity hookups to the back fourteen RV stalls when, when the time is ripe, essentially. I spoke to Mr. Saunders about, I think he's planning to renovate an accessory structure into a handicapped accessible restroom, so he's got someone on that. And we've talked about the marketing, the market that he's targeted already. So a SEQUA initial study and mitigated negative declaration was circulated from October twenty-first through November nineteenth yesterday. And we did hear one response from the regional water board, that they want to make sure that it meets public water system criteria under Title Twenty-two. And that, that's going to be a, a topic of conversation, just because if you break that threshold of having twenty-five people on-site for more than sixty days running, you have to do it. But if you're never going to come that close, I think they are probably going to be reasonable in terms of working for the appropriate level and then upgrading at the appropriate time. At least, that's my understanding from a past project. And the California Department of Fish and Wildlife told us that they would send some comments, but they haven't yet submitted it, submitted them yet. And I think that also is something that, you know, the applicant and the biologist, consultant, and the county would be more than happy to work through whatever criterion in the spring, whether it's increased surveys, just to make sure that their criterion are met appropriately and properly, given the nature of some of the species that are on-site, not all of which I've seen yet, but... So I just wanted to show, this looks east from the, I guess, the backyard, the, the back area of the, of the site. And that's pretty, it makes you want to get in a car and drive really, not fast, but just enjoy the landscape, essentially. This looks from the southwest corner, looks south. And, you know, just beautiful rolling countryside. So, and this is looking north and east a little bit, north by, east by northeast, I think, from, from the property. You can see, you know, like any farmyard or, or rural lot, it's, there's places where storage is occurring, and that's natural and not, not problematic in any way. But what I wanted to point out was the elevation that you see. You know, you're, even though it's on the, it feels flat on the flank of the valley, the southern flank of those foothills, the valley floor is actually quite a bit lower. And so, for example, the Bluntnose Leopard Lizard has its habitat in the Pinotage Creek, but it's down on that valley floor, not in the valley, the gullies, as you step up, so far as we know, at this point, anyway. And I, I'm pointing that out because it's these micro, microhabitats, these micro variations in gradient that, and, and cover, that can make the difference whether a very specialized species would, you know, they're looking for that cut bank, those stones to hide under or rasanon, and, and those don't exist in the back of this property. And they're also looking for less dense vegetation. You can remember that front, first picture, very sparse vegetation and clearly native, and this is annual, annual grasses and very thick. So staff recommends that the planning commission approve use permit PLN eighteen thirty-three with a draft resolution for approval findings and standard and special conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. A little bit for public company, do you have any questions? Or after public company? Public company's open, any speakers?
I don't have any speaker cards.
No speakers?
Is Mr. Saunders here?
I think Mr. Saunders would like to present a little bit more detail about his project.
Thank, thank you, Richard. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Frank Saunders. My wife is here also, Kelly Saunders. You might ask why we would do something like this. Well, we, we went out to Pinotage Valley for our first time in a, in an adventure to go on a, on a riding trip on the Douglas Ranch, and, and we just could not believe how beautiful it was. We ended up spending a couple of nights there and went out for a moon night, moon night ride, and, and we were just struck by the majesty of Pinotage Valley. Very few people out there. We looked around the area for a property to buy for a number of years, and, and finally, about fifteen years ago, we bought a organic farm, which is right in the middle of the valley. And it's currently being farmed, hundred acres are being farmed. I personally grow twenty acres of hay every year, and the rest is Pinotage Creek, which flows down through the middle of our property. The hundred acres that's farmed requires at least ten people a day. This is six days a week, every fifty-two weeks of the year. These people are there all the time. Currently, they're driving from... Currently, they're driving from, most of them are driving from Hollister to Pinot on a daily basis. There's a couple who are living out in the valley, but there's very few residences and, uh, and other opportunities for people to live, so that's one of the reasons I started looking around. And, uh, when the Pinot Inn came available to buy, I had this pipe dream, wow, this is it, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a little RV park here and, and people will be able to come out to the valley, and if they wanna go ride motorcycles out in New Idria, or they wanna ride horses, uh, or just enjoy the, the valley, they'll have a place where they could spend the night, uh, and maybe, maybe a couple of nights, maybe a couple of weeks, whatever. Uh, so anyway, that's, that's my dream, and, uh, I, I put together a plan and, which you've seen, and, uh, and I ask you to, uh, to let me take this to the, uh, to the next step and, and, uh, realize this dream. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm willing to answer them.
Any questions, commissioners? No?
Good. I think it's ideal for people to have access to the BLM properties out there too, and to, uh, just enjoy that space, yeah. I think, I think it's a great idea.
The road's a little bit rough. I got, I hate to complain, but, but the road is, is a little bit rough. Anyway, uh, the county did spend some money recently, and, and it's better than it was, so, uh, we, we have what we have. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more? No speakers?
Okay, back to the commissioners.
No?
I, through the chair, I'd just like to comment that I think the, the trees out there would be perfect. It would be a great spot, uh, to have something like that, in my humble opinion. So, any other commissioners or?
Commissioners?
No comments?
Okay. I think that's a beautiful area.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-Nineteen Next. I think the last one had quite a few, so I'll just put next, and you can fill it in later. A resolution of the Sabanito County Planning Commission approving PLN one-eight-zero-zero-three-three, a use permit for an RV park at the Pinot Inn located at two-nine-nine-six-zero Pinot Road, Pisinas. I second that.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Who's, who seconded?
Robert.
Robert. Okay, next one is P L N nineteen-hundred-seventeen, use permit.
One moment. Mr. Saunders, can we chase you down for a signature? Rich will be bringing a paper to you before you get away and dri- ride your horse into the valley. Oh, that's right, Rich has the next item.
Thank you, Chair, um, and Commissioners. Next we'll present on a childcare center application for nineteen forty-one Sunset Drive. And the applicants, Barbara Lewis, Ted Zien, and Zuya, excuse me, Ted Lee and Theresa Chen, are partners in, uh, a commercial childcare center. Uh, and they, they operate one in San Jose. The applicants, and I'm afraid this is gonna be more text-heavy than the last one, so bear with me because I need to be a little bit concise with the presentation, excuse me, with the presentation. So the applicants propose to operate a day, uh, a daycare center as is colloquially known, or a childcare center as is legally known under California state law, in an existing residence on a one-point-oh-six acre parcel under their ownership at, again, nineteen forty-one, uh, Sunset Drive, in the unincorporated Holiday subdivision just east of Hollister. That's just west of Fairview and just south of, uh, Sunny Slope Road. Now, the, the childcare center is proposed to care for up to fourteen children between the eight, between, uh, the ages of infant to five years. And I got some updated information that's attached to your planning commission packet. Um, and it would operate Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM, with staggered arrival and departure times to minimize, uh, traffic impacts. Staff would consist of, uh, I think, one to two teachers or caregiver slash caregivers. Um, and, um, that would be probably, uh, be ramped up as, uh, attendance or, uh, the, the children, as they got more children in the facility. Uh, it would offer Montessori programming. Now, we need to distinguish between the type of, uh, the type of programming and the generic type of facility. And that's where these definitions can get a little bit, um, hazy, so I wanna be, try to be concise, but very clear. So in the, uh, presentation here, we refer to a, um, a, um, publication thoughtfully provided by the applicants, uh, a couple times, and we can make those, um, available to you, but I'm just gonna, I'll walk you through them a little bit, uh, before we, uh, get too far. So, again, the rural resident, it's under rural residential zoning and a residential mixed general plan, uh, land use designation. And this is, uh, the, uh, subdivision here. So we've got Fairview running north-south on the east side, uh, and it, it's a fairly small, but there are quite a few houses in it. And th- this is Sunny Slope running this way. And a Holiday is the main, the only entrance to this subdivision, running south here, all the way down, then west on Sunset Drive. And you've got, uh, two T intersections that are cul- oop, correct, that are cul-de-sacs, right? Two T intersections that end in cul-de-sacs here, quite lengthy actually, that one, a little bit shorter here. But, uh, Sunset Drive ends in a barrier, uh, see it stubs out and dead ends here as a barrier. So in, uh, one of the traffic, uh, patterns you see is these Santana Ranch, uh, folks at nine AM, eight AM, nine AM, during the peak commute are, uh, take their strollers and their children and their, their pets, and they do, uh, you know, an exercise, get their exercise by either going right through this barrier and around through a full loop, but they come out of the Santana Ranch subdivision. And if they're using strollers, they come in all the way to here, and then they turn around because they can't get the strollers past the barrier, which means that on the way back, they have to navigate coming in and going out this corner, which until recently I understood had some very high vegetation in their site triangle. So, um, it created some traffic problems with people leaving an existing family daycare, a home located here. And as folks, after folks drop off, they head here and they look left without seeing this stop sign that's right here, but because they're looking left because they're going left, and they scoot around this corner. And if people are at nine AM, eight AM, are walking this way and they can't be seen very well, uh, the, the homeowner here came and, and mentioned that she had observed a lot of the people leaving this family daycare home here, uh, actually cutting into the left lane and not stopping whatsoever. So, um, actually going into the wrong travel lane in order to cut and, and speed off to work. So, uh, I'm not detouring here because this really does relate to the issue, uh, at hand here. And, um, what we've got though, I wanted, uh, to point out is that it's a one-way in, one-way out. So everybody coming in to drop off has to go out the same way. And it's not up near the Collector, uh, Road. This, this end of, uh, Holiday has more of a Collector function, uh, but it's, it's not near a, it's in a neighborhood street as opposed to a Collector arterial road. Uh, so, um, the traffic movements from the daycare centers have the potential to change the traffic patterns in the subdivision. But I'm gonna move on pretty quickly here to some definitions. And these are really useful because, uh, there's an umbrella term, family daycare, uh, family childcare facility. So if you see facility, they're just talking about everything. There are a couple of generic terms, daycare, nursery care, and preschool, that could apply to a lot of different, both of these categories, depending upon the situation, I think. So they're general terms that everybody knows, colloquial. But under California state law, you've got two things. You've got a family childcare home, and you've got a childcare center. And I can make this, uh, publication available where these were drawn from, but a family childcare home, either large or small, is a facility that has, uh, that's a home. You've got a home, you're living there with your family twenty-four-seven, and then you say, well, I'm taking care of my own kids or the neighbor ki- why don't I just open up? I enjoy it, why don't I just open up out of my own home that I'm living in, a, a daycare home? Now, the childcare center is everything else. So a childcare center could be any kind of programming, any zoning district, any location, any street. But as I understand it, a family daycare home, the, uh, California legislature has defined, uh, that as a residential use available by right, and so we would have no say if a family already living there, as one did at a kitty corner across from this subject parcel, they can go ahead and get licensed from the CDSS and open up, uh, a family daycare home. Um, but childcare centers are subject to local land use regulations and zoning, which means we have to look at it under the, uh, under the general plan and under their rural residential zoning. So I can make this, uh, you know, again, the applicants are very capable and, uh, and made this particular publication available to us, or brought it to our attention, and it's just really useful in terms of clarifying some of these, uh, concepts and categories. So, um, this really recaps what I'd already said, defining a family daycare, uh, family childcare home as a primary residence, right? But it maxes out at fourteen children. And the CDSS inspects all these facilities with some very, very specific requirements, which are listed on the right to license these facilities. So we just do the land use, but they license a facility and make sure that it's up to snuff according to the, uh, the, uh, requirements of the specific arrangement they've, uh, they're asking to be licensed essentially. So again, this is a repeat, so I won't linger here, but the, the proposed childcare center does not have to be a primary residence for you to approve it. It is subject to local land use, but note that there's no maximum ceiling of children, as far as I understand it, anyway. Now, they've mentioned they have an operations plan, which I've already gone over, but, uh, just, uh, the bottom there, um, Ms. Barbara Lewis is the director. The home is owned by Ted Ziyeli and Theresa Chen, and the residence, Mr. Ziyeli would reside on the second floor, but his residence is not really required for a childcare center. Um, so this is under residential mixed, uh, land use category in the general plan, which is defined as an area with an unincorporated village or neighborhood atmosphere, composed primarily of residential land uses, with some commercial uses serving the residence. And if it was a family daycare home, it would be, um, a res- it's considered by the state statute to be a residential land use, and we just approve that. But in this case, we think the, uh, the Montessori school would most likely serve the entire community and bring in folks from outside this specific, um, subdivision, so they'd come in Holiday, down Sunset Drive, find a way to drop off the kids and turn around and come back, uh, on every drop off or pickup. Under rural residential zoning, um, there's a conditional use permit under two different, uh, sections of the code. So it's allowed where it's essential or desirable for the public's convenience or welfare, as long as it's in harmony with the objectives of the general plan. And I think this pretty much, uh, repeats that, but more succinctly and directly. To approve a conditional use permit, you're looking at two things. Is it properly located in relation to the general plan and to the community as a whole? So is it in the right place? And the second thing is, will it, uh, can, can the planning commission determine that it will not adversely affect other properties or cause damage, hazard, or nuisance to persons or property? And if it complies with all the conditions, you know, um, uh, you can have some adverse impacts, but if we, we put conditions on these conditional use permits to bring them down to the level which, uh, you can make these determinations. Um, so we've got the key considerations, really. Is it properly located? Uh, the primary residence and the single, ceiling, how the number of children cared for are not, are, are, you know, need to be thought about, but are not, uh, you know, they're not the findings you need to make. It's the properly located and the adverse effect on property or persons. So in relation to the general plan, uh, and to the road network, um, you know, the RMA staff has been, um, has reached a determination or an opinion, uh, that, uh, you know, the RM says that it's required to serve the residences. And the way it's written makes me think that, uh, it would be the residents of the subdivision, of that area. And you could think more broadly, and all of the RM designated land use areas in the, in the, in the area. But really, it, it's written in a fairly confined way. And, uh, so what we're thinking is that a Montessori school would draw people from outside the subdivision essentially, and that has traffic implications that could adversely affect or complicate people, uh, deep in the subdivision that are just not thinking about sudden unexpected movements of traffic. And so also, you know, I think you've already, uh, I've already touched upon, is it properly located in relation to the net, road network? And, you know, for a commercial childcare center, um, you would like to see that level of traffic, uh, uh, properly located within this other facilities that also generate that same kind of traffic, where people are looking for those, those unexpected or unusual traffic movements, uh, at drop off and pickup. And, um, and, and the roads there would also be designed to handle that kind of traffic, and people be aware of it, I know, of those unusual traffic movements, but, uh, the roads would also be more, uh, Collector roads, and, uh, arterials are, are, you know, really designed to handle more traffic. And, uh, more people doing more different kinds of things, and this residential street, on the other hand, is, you know, people going home and coming back in deliveries. So it's a very, uh, uh, um, different kind of traffic pattern, I think, that deep in the subdivision. And these are just a couple of diagrams, right? So they've even got the school, if you consider it a preschool, and it, you may or may not because that's an attribute of the facility, not the type of facility. But this sort of illustrates what I was getting at. We've got these, uh, street grids and these, uh, development patterns, but, uh, you know, uh, what the, um, proper location of a commercial facility drawing that kind of traffic would be properly located in the view of the RMA staff, you know, nearer to a mouth, nearer to a Collector or an arterial, or i- i- on a Collector and near an arterial. But we would think that, um, citing it so deeply into a subdivision, where you have to pass many other homes, many other people, and, you know, all, almost all the way to the terminus of some of these three cul-de-sacs essentially, three dead ends, it requires some traffic movements to turn around and come back out. And we can go back to the subdivision slide if you like, or I would like to actually. Um, so trip generation for a facility like this, um, this is a rough, uh, first cut by a non-traffic engineer, but I've done a few of these in the past. And so, uh, the ITE Institute of Transportation engineers have certain trip generation rates. So for daycare centers, they calculate about point eight-four trip ends, that's in or out, but, uh, per student. So fourteen students works out according to these engineers, this manual, this manual, uh, to about eleven-point-seven-six trip ends, and that's per one hour of a peak weekday commute. And, uh, so versus a, a single dwelling unit would generate one-point-oh-two trip ends per hour during a commute peak. So there's a little, a little, uh, a lo- what looks like a, a similar rate because you've got more students, but only one dwelling in it. You end up with a much different, uh, number of estimated trips coming in or out, uh, in a single hour during a weekday peak commute period. So that's a lot of, um, not disclaimers, but a lot of specificity. So, um, I happen to have, uh, designed a, a safer, it's a school program in Newark, New Jersey, a long time ago, and, uh, traffic patterns of drop off and pickup can be, you know, really, really tricky. And it's, uh, it can be very dangerous and just really unpredictable, but, um, well, you don't wanna overstate it, but you do wanna take care, so... So this is located, and I'm going to go back a little bit. You know, again, so you can see. So really, it's directly across from this other, the T intersects directly across from a cul-de-sac essentially. And as someone comes in to drop off, they can go through a circular driveway perhaps, but they're going to have to contend, the people are making a.
Excuse me, sir.
Well, you know, they're proposing one essentially. So, so if, if you were to prove this, right now, because we're going for a denial, at this point, we have not prepared conditions of approval, because that's just the standard practice. But if you were to move toward approval, we could ask you to direct staff to come back with appropriate measures of, measures and conditions that would mitigate some of the expected impacts down below the level where it would not impact adversely people's public health, safety, welfare, peace, and comfort essentially, according to the statute on conditional permits, conditional use permits. So again, what I was getting at here is that as someone comes in to drop off, they would drop off their children. They would come in this way. But right about here, they'd be trying to look left when there's traffic here. And the people who are in subdivision twenty-four seven, because they live there, you know, they're, they're not necessarily looking for unexpected traffic movements. So it's kind of centered really pretty close to that. And they would have a, as a, they have proposed on their most recent site, project site map, to put in a semicircular driveway here. That doesn't mean it solves all the problems.
Mr. Felce, Mr. Felce, do you think we could take it over the line with the staff recommendation?
You've got it. So increased traffic and unpredictable traffic movements. The primary residence is not really an issue, because it's a childcare center. The number of children cared for is proposed at fourteen, but for childcare centers, there's no maximum. The applicants have requested approval now or in the future to increase that. This is the project site map that's been most recently revised and submitted. Semicircular driveway. And if we were going to go for approval, Public Works would work with the applicants to make sure that it was up to code. But at this juncture, staff is recommending the planning commission deny the proposal with, basically, we're just going to ask for denial without finding, without special or standard conditions of approval. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And I think the applicants have, would like to present a little bit too. And they've brought some people to speak on their behalf.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. And thank you to Richard Felce and the San Benito planning staff for all of your guidance and help. My name is Barbara Lewis and I would be the director, the director of the proposed childcare. I am an experienced Montessori teacher and director of over thirty-five years' experience. As we looked to open a childcare, Teresa and I looked for a site that would be large enough and that could operate without disturbing neighbors and have enough space to avoid traffic and parking problems. In February of two thousand eighteen, we believed that we found such a property at nineteen forty-one Sunset Drive. In going to San Benito Planning Office, we found that it was in rural residential zoning and a day nursery childcare is allowed according to Article Three, Chapter twenty-five, zero nine point zero four two. After knocking on doors, meeting and speaking with our neighbors, we found that some of them had concerns mostly about noise and traffic. After lots of consideration, we decided to lower the number of children that we would serve. Originally, we wanted to serve thirty, but after really listening to their concerns, we decided to drop that number to fourteen. We previously discussed growing to serve more children at a later date, but finally decided to stay with only fourteen. We are committed to the character of this neighborhood and we want to maintain it. We were drawn to this neighborhood because of the way it is. Our application is for only fourteen children, contrary to what is stated in the county's report. That is our application. We're asking to serve fourteen children. Serving fourteen children makes us the same as a family daycare, which according to the Health and Safety Code fifteen ninety-seven point forty-six is allowed in a residential area by right. We would be the same number of children, the same amount of traffic, and the same amount of noise. The main difference is a family daycare, in a family daycare, a person who resides in the home is responsible for day-to-day operation. Ted Lee does reside in the home at this time. It is his primary residence, contrary to what it says in the county report. But he is not responsible for day-to-day operation. That would be my job, the one with thirty-five years' experience. We also found that with more children, we might have to have an environmental impact study. And we weren't ready for that. In our walk in the neighborhood and talking with residents, every neighbor we talked to was pretty reasonable. They voiced their concerns to us. After speaking to them about who we are, what we want to do, how willing we are to compromise and work to alleviate their concerns, all of them were agreeable. Well, all but one. So we're still technically considered a childcare, small, but still a childcare. So this requires a conditional use permit. In the planning staff resolution report, it is stated that by county ordinance, we're considered a school because we offer a regular course of instruction required by the California Education Code. But we do not. We have no requirements from the California Education Code. We are governed by license, we are governed and licensed by the State of California Childcare Licensing. The most prevalent issues in obtaining a conditional use permit, which you know, is parking, traffic, noise, space, and concentration. In addressing these issues, I feel like I became a research specialist. Actually, the material that Richard used, I referred to him. On all the research and the articles that I read, the most helpful to me was Responding to Children, Responding to Childcare Facilities: A Practical Guide to County and City Planners. The California chapter of American Planning Association, quote, "Supports the use of this guide as a starting place for city and county planners in their review of childcare facilities." To address parking and traffic concerns, we have planned to put in a semi-circular driveway, which you've heard, as a designated drop off and pickup area, which is recommended in that article. A semicircular driveway allows parents to enter the property, drop off, pick up their child, and exit onto Sunset Drive without making a U or a Y turn. The designated drop off area also gives parents access to on-street parking in front of the property if needed. And it alleviates any need to drive beyond our property or make U-turns. Many childcare facilities are required to have lots of parking that goes unused throughout the day, which is costly and a waste of space. As far as noise, our playground will be behind the house. The house is located in the center of the one-acre lot, putting it almost a half acre away from the neighbors on each side. And the house is pretty far away, as you can see, from the long driveway from the neighbors directly across the street. In considering a conditional use permit, the planning commission is required to reach a determination that a proposed use is A, properly located in relation to the general plan and to the community as a whole. In a residential mixed land use, B, the proposed use will not adversely affect the properties in the vicinity or cause any damage, hazard, or nuisance to persons or property. In our response to finding one, a community is not just a few blocks and a few cul-de-sacs, but a larger area where members are interconnected. This community that we're speaking of has just been greatly expanded. Just across the nearest main street, Fairview Road, is a housing development of hundreds of new homes with many families and children. There is a great need for childcare in this Hollister community. A community that needs quality childcare, like a Montessori program. This Casa Bambini that we're proposing, also referred to as a children's house by Montessorians, of only fourteen children, though technically considered a commercial business, is in fact the same as a family childcare. Children will be in the house most of the time, but they will go in the backyard to play, garden, learn about nature, and do some yard chores for fun as learning. As far as residential mixed zoning, I don't know what would make a better type of business to fit into this neighborhood. Furthermore, there's no evidence that we will cause damage, hazard, or nuisance to persons or property. However, there is a neighbor who was annoyed by the idea of a childcare that would be located across the street from them. There will almost always be one or two persons who are annoyed by the idea of a childcare center in their neighborhood, whether or not we do anything to be a nuisance or not. When there are legitimate complaints, it, and believe me, I looked up, I looked for legitimate concerns, complaints for childcare centers. All of those were where there were bad neighbors. In my training and experience as a director of over thirty-five years, I've learned that a big part of my job is knowing and teaching my staff and parents how to be good neighbors. Finding two, and responding to finding two of the county resolution, it states that childcare will generate unpredictable traffic patterns. Drivers must navigate or execute U-turns and Y-turns in a driveway. This is not true. I've already spoken about the semicircular driveway with many of the properties in that area already have. This will alleviate these problems. At our current location, where we have a similar setup for, for dropping off with over fifty children, drop off runs so smoothly. We agree, we project to generate eleven point seven six trips according to ITE Trip Generation Manual, but these trips will occur over three hours. Three hours during the AM, six thirty to seven, six thirty to nine thirty, and in the evening, three to seven o'clock. I think that's very little impact. We have put forth great effort, and I believe has resolved, all the considerations for a conditional use permit. San Benito Planning Staff is recommending against our opening a childcare for only fourteen children, same as a family childcare, which is allowed by right, because it considers it a business. As I prepared for this hearing, I heard over and over again that most cities and county planners are not very familiar with the details of how a childcare operates. This is often, there is often pressure from neighbors who are annoyed that young children might disturb their peace. I know that these pressures are a factor for the San Benito Planning Office in the ability to make a fair and accurate decision about their ability to be, to see us as a complimentary part of the Sunset Drive community. But the owners, Ted and Teresa, who have purchased this property, also have a right. The planning commission has the authority to grant a conditional use permit if they do not find the proposed use to be detrimental or injurious to persons' property or improvements in the neighborhood. I'm almost done, sorry, so long. Or general welfare of the county. We are none of the above, so we ask that you use your authority to grant us this conditional use permit to operate a small childcare at nineteen forty-one Sunset Drive. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
The first speaker is Frank Guerra. Oh, did you have further to present or? Oh. Yes, I didn't, I have to go in order of receipt. So I thought you were the project applicant presenting, but we will do in the same order as previously provided. I have to go in the same order as receipt first.
Ms. Saka, approximately how many cards do we have?
Seven.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Frank Guerra, forty-five Sunrise Drive, right around the corner. We were never approached, they may have attempted to come to our house, but we were never spoken to. We would have expressed our concerns and with the conditions. Traffic, it's been discussed, but it's a, it's a one-way street end. I mean, it's a, excuse me, it's one street in and out. The calculations, I, I kind of figured it out too. Fourteen kids, parents in and out, in and out, teachers in and out. That's thirty trips, additional trips per day, which would be about a hundred and fifty additional trips per week. And the people on the first street are going to see all those cars. I won't see them, but I'm concerned about the traffic that will be generated right in the area where I drive. Another concern is the septic system. The Health Department probably has something to say about that. We have a family of six, had a family of six living in our home. And we needed to put a new septic system in pretty quickly, new leach, leach lines. We're talking about another, you know, two families of people really living in that house. And while they say, well, somebody's going to be living upstairs only, I don't know that that's going to be a requirement. There's only going to be one resident there. You know, it still could be a family of six, I suppose, living there, plus the additional fourteen and plus teachers and so forth. So I think that the Health Department may have something to, you know, to add to the concerns about septic systems. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ed Morrow.
Good evening, commissioners. I live at nineteen, I'm Ed Morrow and live at nineteen sixty Sunset Drive, right across the street from the proposed Montessori School daycare center. Like everybody said, Sunset dead ends, and there's only one way in and out. But more importantly, we have Santana Ranch Development, which was referred to, is feeding down Sunny Slope and Fairview Road, along with a proposed, not proposed, under construction Santana Ranch School that's going in. That's going to be about eight hundred kids, plus teachers, administrators, and parents going in and out of there, feeding down into Sunny Slope. All that, right now, if you go into our neighborhood and tried to make a left turn from Holiday onto Sunny Slope at about quarter to eight in the morning, you will sit there, because you cannot make that turn. People even try to stop to let you out, but remember, it's feeding through, from Fairview all the way down. So there's times in the day where we're already impacted. I do question when they say one neighbor, I guess that was referring to me. There's twenty neighbors right there that are all opposing this project. They may speak on their own. I've been in, I built this house thirty-two years ago with the idea of a nice, quiet estate living. And having you guys, having this come into the, would just ruin it for all of us. Right now, we have a very peaceful, quiet neighborhood, and we're dealing with all the growth that's going on Hollister. But you put all those cars in our neighborhood with, even with the turnaround, there's absolutely nowhere to go. And getting in and out, if there's an emergency, emergency services need to come in and try to get through there at eight o'clock in the morning, once that school's open, good luck. So I urge you guys to cancel this idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Teresa Chen.
Lening commissioners and neighbors, my name's Yi Chen. Children at my preschool called me Ms. Teresa. I'm one of the owners of the Sunset Drive property and the founders of Lighthouse Montessori School. I started my childcare from. I started my childcare from my home in San Jose ten years ago. I believe as a childcare provider, I know more about how important it is to be a good neighbor than anyone else. We live in the community, we serve the community. My neighbors are my clients, and they bring me clients. I can totally understand my neighbor's concern, because I have also experienced a tough neighbor in San Jose. It was only after the entire community had made countless complaints about multiple problems with that neighbor, the house was vacated by local police department. Now, I wish apologize, apologize to my neighbors here for the last eighteen months, during which we could only do minimum property maintenance due to financial hardships. We are paying mortgage that we had planned to pay with the income from the childcare business. Even with this hardship, we did not want to rent out the property and risk disturbing neighborhood. After we start business, professional landscapers will be hired to maintain the property. Lighthouse has an excellent reputation in San Jose. We support local festivals, provide activities for children. Just like our name, our vision is to become lighthouse for children, their families, and the community. Lighthouse currently has twelve staff members, including myself. Thanks to my co-founder and director Barbara Lewis. We are a great team with very low staff turnover. Mrs. Lewis is also the reason I'm standing here today. Three years ago, Mrs. Lewis bought her house in Hollister and had to commute for more than two hours every day. Wanting to keep the partnership and seeing the need for childcare in San Benito County, I started searching for a good place to open second childcare, which Mrs. Lewis can operate locally. We talked with the Planning Department in March of last year, before making any decision, since as educators, we want to be good citizens and follow all local requirements. Receiving positive feedback from Planning Department, at that time, we purchased the property and started permit application procedure immediately. It had been eighteen months. I want to show Planning Commissioners and my neighbors that we are a very responsible, accountable team, that we are willing to do our best to blend in and to support this neighborhood.
Excuse me, okay, thank you.
Next speaker is, uh, Ms. Anna Boligan. Sorry if I make any mistakes on anyone's name, mine is just as confusing.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Vijaya Lakshmi, I go by Ms. V G, according to my kids. And I've been working in Lighthouse Montessori for four years now, and I'm here to talk about the noise level in our preschool. Before that, I wanna talk about a little about the Montessori. It's a child-centered educational approach. It's an approach that values the human spirit and the development of the whole child. Our children develop order, coordinated, coordination, concentration, and independence at a very early age. We have considered the issue of noise. We have particularly sought out a property that we can operate without disturbing our neighbors. The play area will be fenced in and in located in rear of the property. Extensive childcare playground noise level data collected by Boland and Brennan, Inc. indicates that average noise level associated with playground usage can be expected to range from fifty-five to sixty decibel at a distance of approximately a hundred feet from the central play area. Casa de Bambini, it means children's house. It's their place, it's their house. A Montessori classroom is a prepared environment. As educators, we model them to use soft voices and to walk up to the person if they wanna communicate instead of yelling it across the room. We teach our kids the skill of volume control as part of our emphasis on respecting each other. On a typical Montessori work time, there's so much going on, and you can see there's children doing some jobs in practical life and children working with sound cylinders and matching them. In a corner, you can see a child reading a book, and so much more going on. But our classroom is quiet, not quiet in a sense of totally silent, but quiet in a busy, active, yet civilized way. We implicitly realize that a quiet environment is much more conducive to quality learning. During our outside playtime, our children are fully engaged in our well-planned outdoor space, just like the work time inside, the playtime outside is supervised, and children are busy engaging in different activities. You can see some children riding bikes, some climbing the rock wall, some children filling their buckets with water and watering the plants, doing some gardening. You can also witness some children drawing on sidewalk, some children building sandcastles and forts. Our children are busy playing in well-organized play area, not running around and screaming. We maintain order in the playground as much as we do in our classroom. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Edith Vizou.
Alright, good evening, um, my name is Edith Vizou. I am one of Lighthouse Montessori's teacher. I've been working with them for, uh, five years. Uh, one quick note that I would like to say before I start is that as great teachers, that we are, we inspire hope, ignite the imagination, and instill a love of learning to the children that we serve, and would love to bring that to this beautiful community. With that being said, I'm gonna do a testimony of Greg Gates, who is the senior pastor of the Point Church, uh, which is located in San Jose, and that's where we have our, uh, school in. Alright, so, to San Benito County Planning Commission and Sunset Drive, um, neighborhood, Lighthouse Montessori School has been an act, has been active in our church since two thousand thirteen. They have not only been a fantastic tenant of the church, but have also made major improvements to our facility, played a major role in maintaining the building, and have been amazing partner of the church in serving the community. Uh, Lighthouse Montessori School has always paid the rental on time and follow all church and facility requirements. There has never been an issue with the preschool shared use of the building. They do a great job to keep the facility clean, both inside and out. They have also constructed and maintained a beautiful playground that many people outside of their programs, uh, also utilize frequently. The church and Lighthouse Montessori School have been partners in serving the community ever since the school opened. Every time we have an event, we can count on their support. The services they provide are the highest quality and are deeply appreciated by children and the parents alike. I know Ms. Chen and Ms. Lewis as very responsible, reliable, and honest people. I believe that they will be a blessing to any community this, community they serve, sorry. Sincerely, Greg Gates, Senior Pastor. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrea Zagisi.
Good evening, my name's Andrea. Um, I'd like to mention two things this evening. The first being traffic, I understand that it's a concern that opening a school in a residential area would bring in more traffic. However, having worked at a home daycare before, and at our current preschool, and having worked all shifts of the day, I can surely say that traffic is not an issue. Parents are not dropping off and picking up at the same time like at an elementary school, um, and there's not a large number of cars coming in all at once. We usually have a couple parents drop off at a time, and then they're on their way. Same goes for pickup, anytime after about three, parents could start coming in to pick up their child, and that continues on over three hours or so, so it's really every so often that a car will come by, but there's never a time when all the families are dropping off and picking up at once. We also encourage this to be a pretty speedy process. Parents don't linger around, which means they're back out and on their way fairly quickly. With this new school, we're hoping to start with only fourteen children. We are confident it won't be a problem. The second thing I would like to mention is that if we are able to open the school, we will be providing a sense of community and an employment opportunity for the city, and more specifically, an employment opportunity for a neighbor or a community member. Teresa actually had a home daycare in San Jose some years back, and it was my first job in childcare. Coincidentally, she was also my neighbor. That business of hers provided me a job that was close to my home that I didn't have to commute to for over two hours, even for half an hour. And it also provided us an opportunity to get to know each other as neighbors and to get to know other people in the neighborhood, since we serviced so many families in the same cul-de-sac we were in. Um, on that note, I have a testimonial I would like to read from a current parent of ours about the sense of community she has gotten from joining a school in her neighborhood. "After tirelessly searching for a decent preschool in our area, I started giving up on finding a right fit for my son. I didn't think it would be so hard to find a local school. I wanted Cruz to be able to go to school around kids he could see at the park, parents I could be friends with, other children he'd eventually be going to elementary school with, so I specifically sought out a local school, but my hopes were being diminished until I found Lighthouse. After the first week of attendance, my son received a birthday party invite to his classmates' birthday. I never met the parent, and I barely knew who the birthday girl was, but we decided to go. This is what I wanted, a community. There I met seven other Lighthouse classmates and their parents. Now we play at the local parks and run into someone we know every time. At Starbucks, we see familiar faces or teachers, and my kids are so happy. I'm eternally grateful to Lighthouse, the impact they've had on my family and community reaches far beyond their front doors. They've built a community that every parent and child so desperately deserves and craves. I now help take another classmate to school, so she and her family can have that same experience, because it's that important. This is the sense of community we were looking for." Stephanie Garcia. "This type of community and unity is something we could and would like to provide Hollister if we're given the chance, thank you."
Thank you.
And next speaker is Nina Roach.
Good evening, my name is Nina Roach, and, um, oh. I'm just gonna read this. "Good evening, my name is Nina Roach, and I'm a new homeowner here in Hollister, a mother of three, one of which graduated from San Benito High School last year, go Belors, and, um, I'm an educator. As an educator, I know how important it is for early education to be available for families. It is necessary to have many, all having different philosophies. There are many different personality types, like here in this room. But with that comes different learning styles. It is imperative to have schools that reflect the different learning styles that exist in our society to best equip students as they move through life. Giving young children this tool helps mold healthy, balanced minds who will make decisions for our future. Lighthouse is that place for my family and myself as a teacher. As my, as a parent, my child's well-being is the most important to me, as I'm sure it is for all of you. But let me tell you why I chose Lighthouse as a preschool. Lighthouse is where the focus is building a child's social, emotional skills, what we're doing today. Their ability to interact with each other, problem solve, and learn to navigate their emotions. This is a place where education is offered and enjoyable, and the children are not met with just blocks and coloring each day, but with activities to boost their self-esteem, questions that pique their interest, and friends of the community. As a new proud homeowner here in Hollister, I look forward to the friends we will make while living here. I have a two-month-old daughter and a two-year-old, who I, my oldest, did the commute to Lighthouse in San Jose. In fact, my daughter still does the commute every morning. My daughter has early mornings and late evenings. She is two years old and already hates traffic. I do not want this for my younger daughter, who has to sit in a car for so long. I'm not a fan of screen time because of the long commute. She spends a lot of time on the phone to and from. I would love to have Lighthouse seven minutes from my house. Invite her classmates to our home to play without having to commute. Go to birthday parties without driving to San Jose. We moved here because we love this town. We like to merge our San Jose life with our Hollister home. A school with Barbara and the Lighthouse staff would do just that." Can I have a little more time?
You have twenty seconds.
Oh, okay, let me speak fast. I know that, um, the parking is a concern, and I know that the neighborhood is very concerned, but I want you guys to, w- w- we, our first priority is to keep children safe. And we want to keep people and children safe, and we're gonna do all that we can to do that if you give us the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speaker cards? Yeah, do you mind filling out a card, or is there no more? I have a few here to collect, okay. Uh, I'll take one that's completed first, or? That's fine.
Somebody keeping tabs on pros and cons.
Uh, so the first one I collected was Rob Thompson.
Hi again, I'm Rob Thompson, I reside at one sixty Holiday Drive, which is about five houses in, um, to the neighborhood there. I'm just gonna take a quick couple minutes, 'cause I know you guys have been here late. I just, uh, heard a couple notes from the gentleman and I don't know, it's the partner's wife, saying that she was upset that, um, they bought the property and they weren't allowed to generate some income by having a business, by putting a school in here. And my thought was, no, let me just go with the C C N R. The C C N R is in, in Section Nine, first state that there is a restriction of no commercial use in that area, period. And, um, and I know that there's more than one way to skin a cat, and he's talking about a family daycare, but after listening to his partner, when she said she was upset that they didn't have revenue, and he has another one in San Jose, uh, I don't feel like he plans on living there, I think that this is just a business and a business, period. And we don't, this is a small community like that gentleman said in there, and it's one way in and one way out. And, and the traffic in there is already bad, as you've already heard today. And the other people we're talking about, some of the problems, non-residents drive really fast in there. We all respect each other. All the people that live in that neighborhood have family and children, and they all drive slowly, and we all know each other. And there's already another family daycare there, and the cars that go in and out of there that are not related to residential, that live there, drive really fast. And none of us like it. So putting a second one in there, that are right across the street from each other, and this road thing about the point eight-four trips to bring in fourteen kids, I don't know how you do that, but like the other gentleman said, you got fourteen kids, there's fourteen people coming in and fourteen people leaving. And, uh, and that's just more than what we want in there. It's a nice, quiet community. I respect what the other lady was saying about having daycare, I'm all for it, but there's better places, applications for this in, in our neighborhood. It's a very quiet, uh, one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood, and we don't, we don't want a second daycare going in there. The first one is a family one, I know the gentleman, he's a nice gentleman. He does live there, and he works, and it's not a business for him. It's his wife doing extra, this to me is a total business, and we don't want to turn our community into a commercial, commercial, uh, area. They said they knocked on the doors, I don't know, one of my neighbors here that got a knock on the door that talked to this gal, 'cause none of us are for it, not one. So that's pretty much, that's pretty much all I have to say, but I think the C C N R speak for themselves. It's Section Nine, it's listed right on our, on our, um, right on our title, on our, on our prelim, that, uh, that there is no, let me read it, no commercial use. None of the lot shall be used or caused to be used or allowed or authorized in any way, directly or indirectly, for any businesses, commercial, manufacturing, mercantile, storing, vending, or any such non-residential purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Samuel Helmankey.
Uh, hi, Sam Helmankey, I go. I moved into this neighborhood, I'm down one of the cul-de-sacs. And again, only one way in, one way out. And when I go down to Sunset, sometimes you have to make a left to get out. And depending on the time of the morning, when the sun is coming in, you have to be very careful making that left turn. So adding more traffic in there. I didn't move in there for that, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and I liked it. And I don't like, I was not contacted by anybody. I just happened to find this out from one of the neighbors, and it seems like they're trying to push it down my throat, and I don't want it. And I think most of the neighbors here feel the same way. And I think most of the neighbors here feel the same way. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Gary Hartman?
Hi, I'm Gary Hartman. I live in 110 Sunset. Sunrise. And, uh, it's like your own phone number, you never remember where, you know? We, uh, we too support the, the idea of having more daycare centers in Hollister. But I can't think of a worse place to put it than, than right here. Our entire neighborhood is being impacted now, of course, as you, there was mentioned before, between the, the school and the, and the Santana Row. There's also a big developer sign right there at the corner where we can't see, we're turning left to begin with. That the traffic is terrible. And I really had points to make, but listening here tonight, it seems pretty obvious that the people came into our area to buy this just for the school and not to be as a residence. And I too have the CCNRs that I made a copy for you that, uh, you can have, that shows that there not to be a nuisance and there's not to be any commercial in residential area. So they mentioned that they really wanted to do and abide by the laws, but actually they didn't. Because they came here and bought that place with intention of putting in a school, with no intention of living there. And then af- after that, then they, um, uh, didn't abide by the laws because they signed these CCNRs when they bought the property. So if I can leave this with you, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Damon Felice?
Good evening, Damon Felice, 120 Sunrise. Um, I've lived there nine and a half years and I'm one of the, you know, there's, people here have lived here decades in our, in our neighborhood. Um, I'm one of the newer residents there. Um, you know, I'm gonna, I'll echo what everyone has said. It's one way in, it's one way out, it's quiet. You, there's, the purpose to go in our neighborhood is because you're going to a house in our neighborhood. There's no, in all these neighborhoods now, you drive through, there's no way to drive through. It's great. Um, you know, the bottom line is, it sounds like a great business plan, but I don't think you guys are here to approve their business plan. It's about, do they meet the conditions that are required for them to ba- but they put a commercial school? And I keep hearing them say, "School, school, school." When it starts at fourteen, it can go to thirty. I looked at, I looked at their, uh, I looked on the website at their school up in the Bay Area, Lighthouse. And you look at the square footage that they have for their classrooms and the number of kids per square foot in that two-story house, I don't know if they're gonna go upstairs, but even in the downstairs area, they can have a bunch of kids in that area. Yeah, they keep saying, "Oh, it's gonna be fourteen." It's fourteen today. If you approve it at fourteen, that they, they are then allowed to go to, I think it's thirty, up to thirty, uh, which is gonna be more and more traffic. You know, we have young kids, um, who in our, in our neighborhood, I have a ten-year-old who rides his bike around in there. We don't need more traffic, you know? And, and again, there's plenty of daycares, there's plenty of locations that you guys can go in, in commercial nodes or commercial areas in, in, in this community and, in, in our community. I know you guys are new to our community, but there's plenty of places in our community where you guys can go and, and run a business. Again, it's not your guys' job to approve their business plan. It sounds like a great business plan, but not in a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brooke Carter.
Good evening, I'm Brooke Carter. I've been in the neighborhood for over twenty-seven years and know most of my neighbors. Um, I wanna take this as a different perspective. I am an educator, I'm a first-grade teacher. I've been in Hollister teaching for twenty-seven years, in education for over thirty. And I wanna say that I think our neighbors are not against children and the noise. And I think we all love children. We want them educated in your school.
Excuse me, direct us to us, please.
Uh, well, I want them to know that-
No, they're, they're here, you, direct it, direct it.
We appreciate that they wanna educate the children and take care of them. I just think it's just not the spot for a business. It's just too small of an area for a business, but I appreciate what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, the last speaker card currently, uh, is Ed Lee.
Good evening, uh-
One moment, we're gonna reset the clock for you.
Okay.
Uh, you can go ahead now.
Good evening, uh, everyone, the commissioner and my neighbors. I really feel, uh-
Excuse me, uh, the, address it to us, please.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I'm living here, I'm resident of Hollister. I've been here for, uh, more than a year. I come here every day, every night, I live here every night. And, uh, weekend, I, you know, do the landscaping. So, uh, I don't know why they don't consider me as a resident. I, I'm the resident. I'm your neighbor, by definition, neighbor is your friend. So, uh-
Excuse me, can you look at the commissioners?
So, uh, some, something is, uh, I mean, maybe I, I need to do more to meet my neighbors and talk with them. I did talk with some of the neighbor, but it look like I still need to, actually, uh, you know, I have done a lot of work for some neighbors. So there's some, something missing here. And also the first, the first thing is, I want to clarify, I, I'm the resident. I will be here, I'm not sure how long, maybe, you know, another thirty years, fifty years? You will hea- you will see me, guaranteed, okay? So I will be a neighbor from last year, actually, it will be, uh, in the, in the future. And the second thing is, uh, uh, regarding the business, sounds like I'm a greedy man, come here to grab money. No. The school, if that's your concern, now I can tell you, if the school ever make any one cent, I can donate a hundred percent. I don't make money on the school for, even for one cent. Okay? Because, so the school is in my heart, I mean, I wanna use, utilize my capability, you know, whatever I can do. It's more like a good thing, you know, in, in the God, I mean, we, we wanna do something good for the future, for the kids. I do not need the school to generate any one cent for me, I do not need those money. Okay, this is not my business plan, this is not a business. So for the neighbors' concern, yeah, I mean, if you think, "Oh, I, I wanna make money here", I can, I can tell you, I donate a hundred percent of a business, uh, profit if they, if any. Is that okay? This is not a business plan, it's a school, okay? Nonprofit. I will myself make a zero profit. And, uh, regarding the, regarding the septic, actually, we were, uh, approved for, uh, fifty-two, uh, people. So the, the septic, you know, some, some neighbor, uh, took up the concern about the septic. And also the, uh, you know, from, from last year, for eighteen years, uh, I mean, eighteen months, sorry. For eighteen months, we have been, uh, you know, considering, uh, all the input from our neighbors because a school, can I have a few more minutes?
No, that's okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, uh-
No, that's fine. Number ten.
No more time?
Number ten, no.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I don't have any more speakers.
Any more speakers, no?
Okay, I guess we have one more.
There's one more.
While you go up, um, I'll grab you one.
If everybody else wants to speak, grab a speaker card and speed up the things, process here.
Hi, my name is Kathy Stoya and I live at 2020 Sunset Drive. I've lived there for thirty years. And it's a quiet street, quiet neighborhood. And people that drive in are usually going to somebody's house to visit or to do something. But since the new, other daycare's opened over there, I have a porch on the side of my house that I sit on out in the morning. And we have so many walkers in our neighborhood since, especially since Santana Ranch opened up. I mean, there are a lot of walkers, mothers with babies in strollers or in wagons. And, um, we have no sidewalks where we live. So the mothers are walking in the street. And there are cars parked, so they have to actually walk in the street. We all know how the curve goes on our street, everybody drives slow. But these parents that drop their kids off, not where you are, but at this daycare, fly through there. They've almost come in my yard a couple of times, taking that turn. They never stop at the stop sign. And I've gotten bad gestures from them when I do this to them. And I'm concerned because I have ten grandchildren and when they're out there playing sometimes, I, I worry about them. So I don't let them play out in the front when it's pickup time and, and the times vary there also. It's not always five o'clock. But, um, the peop- the parents that bring their kids there are in a hurry to get to work. Then they're in a hurry to get home. And they have no respect for our neighborhood. And I'm really worried that one day, there will be a young mother with her children hit by one of these nervous mothers that don't wanna be late for work or don't wanna be late for home to do their cooking. So that's my concern is the, the extra traffic. Okay, thank you.
Very, thank you.
You can use my binder. And the next speaker is Patrick Marshall.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. I'm Patrick Marshall, live at, uh, 1801 Sunset Drive, which is the last house on the left-hand side of Sunset, right at the barricade. So there's one way in, one way out, and that's the way it is. But I want to address a very important situation regarding statements made by the applicant. I'm having a hard time pinning down what it is they are. The first lady that spoke, I believe it was Ms. Lewis, said that they are, could be technically considered a family daycare. Technically, it means it requires someone living there that is associated on a full-time basis with that property, assuming during the course of operations of the, uh, business. And yet, this gentleman here, who says he is the resident, seems to be in and out and he's only, I think, there on, you know, I'm sure he has a day job. So that property is generally, uh, there's no one there during the day. Now, sure, we have the, the school with the teachers and so forth, but if it is a true family daycare center or daycare, they're limited to fourteen. That's the state law, that's all it is. But the applicants are applying as a daycare center. It could be fourteen, it could be twenty, it could be thirty, it could be fifty kids, who knows? So if it isn't this and it ain't that, then what is it? So with all the traffic problems that I see, even with the, the maximum, minimum, if you wanna take it, at fourteen kids, there are problems. And I'm not going to review that primarily just with the other neighbors that have spoke about traffic concerns and so forth. There is at least the potential, at some point, we're going to see more children, more trips in and out of a neighborhood that has closed access in and out. And in view of now a school that's gonna be online in a couple of years, as one of the, uh, people, applicants said, hundreds of homes up there on, uh, Santana, I think it's called. Now they're starting to build down just north of Cielo Vista, four hundred homes. What is that going to do to those of us who have lived there, in my case, thirty-eight years? What is that going to do to our quality of life? And then to have this intrusion coming in at nineteen forty-one, I think is going to break the camel, the straw that breaks the camel's back in more ways than one. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can bring it back to yourself if you had questions of the applicant. And so we'll do that.
Do you guys have any questions? No, no.
It's your show.
We'll give you a minute for closing remarks.
Very quickly, um, it sounds like there's a real problem there.
I, I see that there is a problem already with traffic before we get there. And I think that is something that needs to be addressed, whether we're there or not. I feel for that community and the traffic problems that they have. Um, I would be willing to help with that. I, I think that's important. At our school right now, on occasion, we have a parent that's racing in the driveway, they get a notice. And if they continue to drive that way, they will be asked to leave our school. Montessori is not just a program that teaches children, but it teaches families. A major part of Montessori is teaching respect for self, respect for your neighbor, and respect for your community. I think, I feel for the community. I think you need help with the traffic. I think something needs to be done. Um, I wanna be there too, and I don't wanna be there if people are racing in and out and putting children in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more speaker cards. Uh, close the product hearing, bring it back to the commission. What are your thoughts, Commissioner Gibson? We'll start with you.
I don't have any at the moment.
Thank, thank you, Jerry. I have to say that I, I have great sympathy for all the stories that I've heard. I understand that the Montessori schools are excellent. And we have, uh, one in Hollister at the little Saint Luke's Church. Uh, and the preschools around town, uh, do serve the community well. I do see the drawback in, with the traffic and, uh, the community and especially the CCNRs. If a person has purchased a home, uh, and have signed, uh, this kind of a document, it does seem to be quite an impediment to the type of school that, that is being proposed. So, uh, that, that's my comment.
My, my comment is really to what Ms. Lewis said, then, I, I believe with or without the, the Montessori school, there, there's a traffic issue there that, that needs to be addressed. And we don't really have, I think, um, solutions for that. But I'm interested to know what thoughts the, the community has, the neighborhood has in terms of what would be best for, for those traffic, traffic issues that, that do exist. Because if a family, another family daycare shows up there, which again, the county can't say no to that, um, that's just gonna compound the problem. So, interested to know what, what, uh, options we have in terms of improving the, the traffic situation there and, um, look for public's, the public's, um, input on that as well. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, very similarly, I echo, um, Commissioner Edlin's kind of sentiment in terms of, um, you know, the, the mission and vision of this, um, organization. I think, uh, I guess for clarifying, just, uh, yeah, because I've heard a, a number of terms being thrown around, in terms of nonprofit, in terms of school, um, family childcare. So as I understand it, it is legally, uh, a childcare center, therefore not a family, uh, center per the application, if, um, I'm correct. And then, um, I know we, we also threw in the word nonprofit, but I wanna make sure that we're understanding that. If it's not, is it, when you say nonprofit, is it, "Oh, I'm not profiting off of it?" Or is it legally five oh one, whatever, nonprofit? It's just more of a clarification purposes. But it's, my understanding is that it's not registered as a formal nonprofit, is what I think, um, uh, some of that stuff is. But, um, another thing too is I wanted to, um, you know, thank for all the testimonies since, uh, that we hear, we heard here tonight. I think it's a great kind of rendition to what the program does. Um, just as a reminder, I know these issues can, again, similar like the nodes and some of the other stuff we've seen, can get very, um, a little bit, um, subjective and, you know, we have a lot of, uh, emotion behind them. And I think we just need to be as objective as possible as the commission. Remind, and a reminder that we are commenting on, um, the land use and, uh, some of the, you know, traffic concerns and stuff like that, not so much on the quality of the program. I think that's pretty self-evident, we can keep those, you know, opinions to ourselves. Um, those are just my comments.
My comment is, uh, well, I think the school's a good idea, don't get me wrong. I have my child's, uh, two of them, they're both in college, they went to childcare, a school type of thing. But if you bought this property and didn't read the CCNRs and wanna do a commercial of it, when especially when it's not destined for that, I think you might have made a mistake of trying to do a commercial business out of a residential, especially when the CCRs are written. Because I lived in places where there were CCNRs and, trust me, I didn't like some of the CCR, so I moved out. But that's a gamble you took without reading the fine print. And I'm sorry, but I mean, you probably have a great school, don't get me wrong. The testimony from the teachers, uh, but, you know, you can't do something that's not allowable. So that's, that's my opinion. So, um, commissioners, uh, I'm gonna leave it to you guys, see what you guys wish to do. But again, if you're not satisfied with our decision- But again, if you're not satisfied with our decision, you can appeal it to the board supervisors. That's your right. So... Do I hear a motion?
So just, just, just a brief clarification, just for a real small part, is the arena that you can occupy here regards, uh, park it, parking, traffic, noise, or the concentration of these in what you feel appropriate or not. But not, not the program inside, whether it's called Montessori or it's called, you know, Best Practices or something. I'm not familiar with the different names, so it's not about what is being taught. But, you know, you, you regulate time, place, and manner, and appropriateness, parking, traffic, noise, those types of things.
Commissioners, hear a motion or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the use permit based upon staff recommendation and the findings that the proposed project is not properly located in relation to the road network or to other land uses and et cetera, that are spelled out in the findings.
I second that.
Who's the second? It's from Commissioner Navarro.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, why don't we just, as a courtesy, remind that both the people in the gallery and the applicant, should they wish to appeal your decision, that that is, um, um, could be made at the RMA offices within the next 10 business days? Excuse me, 10 calendar days. And there's a fee and application fees with that if you wish the Board of Supervisors to reconsider the determination just made by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chair, the planning staff had no other business to conduct, although there is an item called Discussion still on your agenda.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion items. Uh, I just wanted to follow up with, um, our membership in the California APA and whether we have our logins to review the library of information that's available to us if we are members. That was something that was supposed to have been done months ago, but we don't yet have login information. I also wanted to follow up on the broadband consortium and when they are going to provide us with a presentation. That's also was requested a, a little while ago. And the last item was just following up on a comment by the principal planner regarding the need for additional full-time employees to, uh, get our general plan in order. So I'd, I'd like to see if we can get answers to, to those things or presentations shortly.
If I'm here in December, I'd love to do it.
Any other, because I got a, a long, long list.
Log in for AP Library, I'm sorry, the, it was-
California APA.
Right.
Part of our membership is access to their website that has a lot of information.
I got that one. And the second one was follow-up to-
Uh, with the broad, uh, the, when the broadband consortium was gonna make a presentation. That one's been a relatively long time coming. And also the, uh, planning staff.
Staffing levels and what, uh, what supplemental staff could do for general plan implementation.
Correct. Those are my issues.
Anybody have more issues? I got some issues.
Uh, Chairman, if I could, uh, thank you for, thank you for receiving my phone call yesterday, uh, kind of a preview of the application, of the agenda this evening. I, I, I did speak with the county engineer and I have, uh, for our own personal sidebar, I can bring you up to date on those two.
Oh, there's two or three? There's, uh, there's, I know there was three of them out there. I can find the addresses. I've been a commissioner for a long time.
First it's two, now it's three. Um, but I can bring you up to speed on those, uh, deferred improvements and, and the status of those. I, I have those right here.
Okay. Because I know the one that was supposed to be doing deferred improvements two years after they got their conditions permit. It's been five years, it hasn't happened. The other one is the school that I mentioned, um, on McCloskey, and that school's for sale. I just want to make sure that they continue with, uh, making the improvements on McCloskey, that they were deferred back in 2000.
Uh, well, if you, if you want me to just encapsulate-
Go ahead.
Uh, the, the, uh, the solar project was a subdivision. It was a minor subdivision. And we, um, actually did take in a cash deposit in lieu of the improvements being made. And that is a cash bond that we can, uh, use to, if we were going to make the improvements. What we generally do is we say, "We're gonna use the cash bond, or you can make the improvements." So what we have is the, the lever and the financial mechanisms in place to get those public improvements that you as a planning commission wanted on Buena Vista. And so we have that mechanism there. The other project was the-
I got a question.
Yeah.
Are we gonna proceed making the improvements? Are we just gonna keep going and, they've been on there five years?
No, I think what we can do, and it's, it's, uh, the, the county hasn't done this well, but it's standard practice in many jurisdictions. And maybe even, uh, uh, Council Ellen Woods is familiar with this, is we can, um, put a letter out that says, "We'd like to hear a plan from you in the next two or three months on how you would get this done on your expense to finish it to, to county standards. If not, we're gonna call the ticket on the-"
That'll be city standards.
On the cash, on the city standards, on the, on the bond we have against these improvements. And we'll pay for someone to get it done and spend your money. And so we can kind of give these thresholds of, "We need to hear from you. We'll give you a chance at it." And if we don't, and if we don't have performance, then what we've laid in place already is that we have the tools to, to get that performance.
Could it be done in 30 days? A response back in 30 days? I think that's adequate time.
You know, that's kind of a standard letter and code enforcement, but what we can do is we can work with council.
Oh, you know, a letter from them, see what they want to proceed and not, you know, because you have no, they'll keep running circles.
Sure, sure.
They've been doing it for five years, so.
Right. So we're, uh, we're staffing up in code enforcement as well as, uh, in management. So I'm sure we'll have, um, direction on how, how tight we write such a letter and the leverage or the, uh-
County counsel couldn't handle that?
Yep.
We can do that. And then the other project, which was the, uh, that-
Seven Day Avantis.
Which is internal to the neighborhood, was not a subdivision. But, um, the discretion of when to ask for those deferred improvement agreement, uh, deferred improvements on the street rests with the county engineer. And I have the resolution and some conditions here. And so, um, basically, if, if the county engineer says it's time and those background conditions that were present two or three years ago have changed now that we think it's a different scenario where it's imperative that we get the improvements, then we can ask for them. But we don't have the money behind them, like we did with the subdivision.
So we're gonna-
But we still have the authority to-
Put a lien on the property?
Oh, gosh.
Well, we'll, we'll have battle. You, we're gonna kind of spend half a million dollars trying to get the improvements.
So we should probably be a little, little touchy here and speak in generalities because none, neither of those addresses, none of those properties, no, nobody's here. It wasn't an agendaized item. But just in broad principle, when we've, when we have a cash deposit against the deferred improvements, we can call it. But we also give them the chance to, uh, make those improvements so that we don't have to spend that money. And then on the other one, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, that we, we, we do have the authority to insist that it gets done. It's often been deferred and deferred and deferred. But we've got, we have more management and, um, I think the county just in general says, "Well, we deferred all those road improvements. We've got potholes everywhere. It's about time that when people, you know, get their approvals and we expect them to put in improvements, that they put in those improvements."
No differing improvements.
So I'm not sure-
It becomes a lawsuit.
Is the third one you wanted, uh, similar in situations?
It's another similar, it's, it's an, um, San Juan Batista. I think on Lucy Brown Lane. I've been here a while. I have to go back and find out exactly where I, my memories, as you get older, start slipping away.
And can I just ask, uh, with the lateness of the hour, do you mind if we collect ourselves tomorrow for the different signatures?
No, no problem.
And maybe we run by your office instead of staying later tonight?
As long as you have a nice hot cup of coffee. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion fails three to two.
We're still here.